Okay, it is 7:01. So we'll call the order the Community in Business Relation Committee. We don't need a roll call.
I will note your attendance. All present, thank you.
So on the agenda, we have a presentation from Village Manager Rebecca Ewald for consideration of Policy Number 37, Science Objects and Other Communicative Structures on Public.
I'm not going to be redundant and go through the history, but for brevity, this topic arose in 2014, 2017, and about every year has been in front of the board. So as trustee Kudo had asked me earlier today, what brings it back to the board again? It was deferred in March of 2020, but recall that was right before COVID pulled everything to a halt and shutdown began. So any items that committees were working on were pulled from those agendas because we had it to shift and pivot into some new ground with COVID. So now we keep a list of everything that needs to be looked back at, and this was one that was outdated. It also had a completely different Community and Business Relations Committee that was reviewing the item at the time. So it's being brought forth at this time so that you can see the history and the work that has previously been done on this particular policy that was deferred and not yet approved. The previous Community and Business Relations Committee did have a Recommended Policy 37, which is included within your packet, that they recommended to the board for approval. So tonight here with me is Attorney Bayer, who also has had the great experience of working through the policy more closely with the Community and Business Relations Committee a bit. The Assistant Village Manager at the time was the primary staff person working on this policy and also with him. And so I'm just stepping in to provide some consistency from our office on this item. And we are here tonight to address any questions that you may have regarding the materials in front of you.
We want to go with questions from the committee?
We have one member of the public or staff, which is Rachel Collins, who just joined the call, but we don't have anyone on the call, at least from the public.
Okay. Any questions from the committee?
I have a question. So if I'm reading this correctly, policy proposed the village would not images on images posted by the village shall not include religious symbols or decorate as defined by law. But does that mean we could put lights on the Christmas tree at Outwater? Is federal law allowed?
Yes.
It's a holiday tree. The lights would be allowed and the menorah could be installed.
Well, here's, so you have the ability to allow that? Absolutely. There's no doubt. There's, there's cases that say, you know, that you're not, that municipalities are not violating the Establishment Clause just simply because they allow third-party groups to put, you know, holiday-related religious symbols on, on, on public property. Here's where the, here's the rub, though, is once you do that, once you give permission for any group to, to put what they call communicative structures in, in your, on your public property, it becomes, you're essentially committed to allowing any other group to do the same thing. So where you run into problems is if you discriminate based upon content. So if the next group comes forward and it's Citizens Against Vaccines, or the next, it's literally the Nazi Party of Wisconsin, you gotta let them do it. So the, the discussion at the time when, when the request came in was sure, absolutely, you have the right to do that. But where municipalities have gotten in trouble and where they've gotten sued is somebody comes in and they want to put, like, for example, you know, the manger scene in, in front of the courthouse or something, which again, you know, there's no Establishment Clause issued there generally, but
Did you call it an Establishment Clause?
Right. There's, there's Establishment Clause where you're, you know, generally there's no Establishment Clause issue with just allowing another group to put something in public property. But then where generally where the problem runs into is then you get four or five other groups saying, well, we want to do the same thing. And then you try to come up with these elaborate, you know, policies where you, you designate a certain square footage area that one community up north designated a certain square footage blocks in front of their courthouse and then said, okay, any groups during the holiday season between this date and this date can come and, and first come, first serve, whatever, whatever goes is whatever goes. You can do that, but once you open the Pandora's Box, so to speak, you know, you gotta have some kind of a determination is where are we going to put it? Where do we cut it off? And then, you know, so you don't get nine, you know, nine more applications and they all want to be next to they on the same park space. So we got lucky, we, we granted a, a special permit to do that for a couple of years with no policy and nobody else, nobody else asked. So it didn't, it didn't become a problem, but that, that's kind of why, you know, the staff had said, well, that's fine, you know, we, we can do that. We can approve the request. That's, that's, you know, legally not a problem. But to look ahead and to say, hey, if, if we're going to do that, if we, if we're kind of jumping without a net, because if we don't have any established policy as to, you know, where we're going to put this stuff, how many applications are we going to take? Is it limited? So the alternative was, I think, is what they came up with here, which is to more or less have it restricted.
Except for holiday.
Well, right. I mean, so, so the, what happened there is, and to explain, so there, there's, there's well-established case law that says, you know, where there's been challenges to the, you know, holiday, what they call, you know, the, the lights or whatever on, on, on a tree. And there's been arguments made by different groups that, well, you know, that's a religious symbol. And, you know, if, if you allow that, you know, there's, there's an equal protection or equal access issue because we're not allowed to display our symbols as well. And the courts have looked at and said that those types of lights are so ubiquitous and they're so, they're so common that they really have lost any, you know, they're, they're not necessarily only a religious symbol, they're essentially secular. And we're not going to say that that violates, you know, any equal access, equal protection issues. If a community just puts up its own lights or, you know, has, has, has some lights up, that, that, that doesn't open the, the box where you have to say, well, now you have to let, you know, all symbols in. So there's specific case law, and the reason for that is it's not, no one's saying that, well, it's okay, you know, that government is condoning Christianity or Catholicism or whatever, you know, by having, allowing that, it's just that the courts have looked at it and said, actually, by having those lights, and this is their opinion, not mine. Again, I'm not, you know, making this up as I go along. This is, this is well-reported case law over the years. The courts have said, you know, well, we don't deem that to be a religious symbol because it's just some lights and it's so ubiquitous and it's, it's essentially secular. So that's, that's what the courts have said. So sometimes when we get those questions, that's what we explain to people.
So what we've done for the last two years seems to have been working.
I guess it depends how you define working. I mean, we, I mean, what we did is we had no policy. No, no, we haven't. So, right. I mean, we got, we got, you know, and we haven't had a request from, you know, a group that you might not want to see on Lake Drive ask for equal access to the area. So we've, you know, dodged a bullet there, but, you know, so if there was another group that might be less savory that wanted to say, well, we want equal access, we want to put a sign or a symbol next to that, we would have probably been, you know, obliged to grant that request. We kind of got lucky in the sense that that didn't happen.
Trustee? Yeah, thank you. So, you know, one suggestion that may have gotten lost with transition from Tyler, maybe to Chris, and just got lost in the mix of a lot of things going on, was a suggestion for, to public open spaces that we consider doing something much maybe bigger, because I think the consensus is people really like the lights at, you know, during the holiday season. They like, they like, you know, the tree lit up and they want to see more of that. So we're kind of going in this direction. We started to go in a direction where instead of just lighting up a tree, was there more that we could do so it wasn't so specific on a tree as hence a Christmas tree or, you know, Christmas lights on a Christmas tree. But maybe there is more we could do in Atwater Park to light other elements. So it wasn't just so focused on a tree. You know, so that, that was a suggestion that we, that I had at one point to, to have open spaces, take a look at, and I'm not sure it really got far. I know that there's electricity problems or a lack of electricity at, at Atwater Park. So I think that would require a little bit more, there'd, there'd be some work that needed to be done to make that happen. But I thought for an attraction, you know, everybody has, like, communities have their, their kind of attractions where people like to drive by and, and look at. And I thought this could be an opportunity for Shorewood to, to light up Atwater Park to a certain degree and, you know, during the holiday season.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, but I wanted to let trustee Ursink have the glory. I was not on the board at that time, but I did watch many of those proceedings and they, sorry, the, the, this, that solution they reached was a, you know, a result of many long conversations among that group, largely between trustees, Ursink and Carpenter. And, you know, that was an interesting journey to watch, to say the least, but I mean, I think there was a sense of consensus that this might be, you know, if practical would be, you know, a way to move forward. It seemed like an elegant solution.
This doesn't preclude, like, the bid or somebody doing something downtown Shorewood, like?
No.
You put, I mean, like, City of Milwaukee strings lights across the intersections on Scottsdale.
Yeah, it's private versus public. So what the bid does down in Wood Square is, is a private sort of, we, they have that, it's, it's, it's more private than, than public. So we're able to do
The tree in the middle.
They're able to do the tree and, and that sort of thing. So.
Thinking of your attraction comment.
Yeah. And I was, and I was, you know, it'd be nice to get the bid, you know, we actually talked about the bid trying to do something, because the bid right now is, is thinking about decorations. We've got to, you know, we're, that's always a big topic for the bid is, is holiday decorations on, in the bid district. You know, we've got the snowflakes right now and they're on their last, they're melting essentially, you know, but global warming has hit those hard. But, you know, but one idea was like, oh, can the bid do something like help with this Atwater project? And it's just not in their sort of scope because it's so far from our business district. So it's really nothing they can do. But we do put their energy into that kind of wood square area and try to get people there. And I mean, it's been pretty successful, but, you know, I, I think that Lake Drive and having people drive, drive down that street and to see a tree lit up over there or something lit up is, is also pretty nice. It's a nice addition. But this does not, this does not affect what we're talking about tonight, only affects kind of that public space or the village property as opposed to private property.
And that would affect any property, not just
I noticed this, but only
Right, but any village property? Okay.
So for example, Village Center and I know Rachel's Hall. And so this would apply to basic manage. And I'd like to have in the district. But the light.
If I could just comment on that, this I was trying groups that want to post signs, symbols and other structures inside public buildings would reference the village's adopted communication plan, which then, we also around this time left off on chapters four and five, which then addressed the interior of public building. And within the library specifically, and Ms. Collins can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, the, the library has a set policy for, for the interior of its space with regards to decorating. This would be exterior of buildings.
So one thought, and I live in the Atwater neighborhood, and I know how much the tradition of that lit tree means to that part of the village, and probably a lot of the village. But just one thing that I was thinking of recently was, you know, the plaza hasn't been there all that long. And is the plaza lit all night long? Is the tree, if we put lights on the tree, is it lit all night long? And I guess my question is, now that we have the plaza there, which is such a signature, would that be enough? And after that, I mean, I guess I look at the park as a natural reason. I would love to be able to go out there and look at ours and not maybe see a gingerbread house or whatever someone decides is an okay secular. I guess I'm not looking to add an attraction to the Atwater Park in any, because I think it has a simple beauty that we should just let it be a very small park. And I'm wondering if illuminated plaza, which seems to represent a lot, it's indicative of humanity me, is that enough?
Right. The way, the way it's written now, there's, other than, you know, specific signage to promote an event that might be happening in the parks, you know, for 24 hours, such as the men's club, chicken roast or whatever, it, it pretty much doesn't, it doesn't let any, it doesn't really allow any other third-party structures or, it's pretty, it's, it's, it's pretty what's the word I'm looking, restrictive in that.
And so if we approve policy and the rabbi comes with proposal for a menorah, what would based upon policy?
Well, I think, I think talking to the bid and getting that in the bid district is also, because I think they've tried to do both and to say that, you know, there's an opportunity to work with our bid to get it, you know, downtown Shorewood, which might be a much more visible sort of location. That's kind of what we've talked about in the past, because I think they've always, he's always tried to get it at both locations. And sometimes it's at one, sometimes that's the, that's the other, at the other. But I think if we have a new policy, you know, then the bid, they'll, their holiday celebration with the tree and the menorah, that would still be, you know, a great viable opportunity for the menorah.
Yeah, but I think this is no. Downtown and not at Atwater.
I would say downtown.
We would offer that.
Downtown, not at Atwater. That's what, that, that would be my suggestion, just from my work with the bid and, and in this, this topic sort of in the past. But, I mean, it may come up and that, that's going to be a hard decision regardless.
Yeah, I mean, so there'd be no opportunity on public owned, municipal owned to put up a menorah or Christmas tree or manger scene or anything else. I don't think what Arthur's wood squares Bible, any, but it would have nothing to do with it. He would, he would be out of the, that business.
Okay, so then, would, would the village?
And I'm getting reports that the audio is a bit broken up. So if we could just focus on trying to speak into the mics, that would be great.
Then would, would the DPW next December put lights on the tree at Outwater?
That would not violate.
I would say yes, the lights stay on the tree, because there, it's a, it doesn't go against the Establishment Clause that Attorney Bayer was talking about. So Atwater state, literally, my understanding is that nothing would change from the past two years. Situation remains the same. We just actually have a rule now that says you cannot put stuff up. But Wood Square has what they have, you know, Atwater has the one tree.
No menorah.
No menorah. And then we're, you know, we're, we're just
And, and that's the conversation, the conversation kind of was, always goes back to our tree, our lights on a tree, religion, a religious symbol. And, I mean, I think you can, that argument can be, you can have that argument over and over again. And I think when we went to, when we started having the conversations about, oh, is there something else in that area that you could put lights on and still be effective? Maybe that's the way to go. So you're not just lighting up this tree. But, you know, I, I think the courts, is it the Supreme Court that, that ruled that, that lights on a tree are a secular object that they're not?
Yeah, it's well-established.
Yeah.
Again, that's, you know, that the policy decision view, but that, I'm just saying legally, yeah, that doesn't, I'm trying to, I'm not
No, no, I understand, I think.
And so, you know, and again, you have the right to continue to allow that, you know, part to be played, issue. But if you do that, what you need is a structure, structure where you can allow third parties to place items in public property. Then in order to prevent that from being free-for-all policy, where is it going to go? Many permits are and they get and kind of stuck on the content. You know, you may not like some permit requests you get, but you can't really find them. So that's,
For fear of litigation.
Right. Yeah. And that because the group will say, well, you know, people might find our message tasteful, but except, that's where but once, once you open the, the box, say, okay, gotta give a couple.
And so then if we pass this, and the rabbi comes and wants we pass this policy, and we've passed this policy, and we'd like to send you to the bid and see if you'd like to work with them for a menorah in the commercial district.
Because I read this, it would not be allowed in
Under a special permit or anything.
Yeah, I mean, I'm generally supportive of the recommended motion. I guess my only thought would be, you just need to be thoughtful in terms of implementation and, and the choices that we make. Because there were pretty lengthy debates on this. Would be worth taking note of the, you know, HRC again. I mean, I'm supportive of the most.
And, and so the HRC recommendation was to not allow the lighting of the tree, is that correct?
The, the lighting of the tree at Outwater?
Yes.
That's my understanding, yes.
But then you talk to residents and everybody would, is, you know, everybody wants the, you know, we could ask the, the crowd here, raise of hands, who wants the Atwater tree lit? I'm sure we'd get a couple of people here that would want the tree lit. So, you know, I, I hear the resounding, that resounding positive feedback from lights on the tree from residents. So.
So recognizing that we have seven minutes before the village board meeting starts. Is there any further discussion? The chair would be happy to entertain a motion.
I move to support Policy Number 37, Science Objects and Other Communicative Structures on Public Property.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second? All in, are there any discussion, any final discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Well, are there any, so for adjourn, are there any new business, any other things to come before the committee?
I would like the committee at a future date to look at improving communications between residents and village staff and, and the board. Just to kind of review what we've got and how we could improve it.
Okay.
So that would be an item that we would take up under future agenda items of consideration in front of the board. So you're welcome to bring it up during that item tonight. We're going to agendaize for this action on this agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Suck it?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.
Two, which has generally been called the green space ordinance. Um, next slide. As a matter of origin, um, I just wanted to point out that this, um, current language was adopted by ordinance fourteen forty-six on June seventeenth nineteen eighty-five. The title of that ordinance was an ordinance related to the regulations and of the construction and use of driveways, patios, decks and parking spaces. The purpose statement was, whereas the village board believes that it is in the best interest of the village to perpetuate attractive street views and neighborhoods, maintain privacy and encourage the development and preservation of open space uh, in the village and, and there was more technical language after that. Um, the item that was specifically adopted was number seven. At least thirty percent of each lot shall be planted with grass, shrubs, trees or other forms of vegetation. Notably, that clause did not differentiate between residential lots or commercially zoned lots, which is, um, what brings us here tonight. Uh, next slide. Um, as, as noted, it was adopted, um, with that language. Over the years, it's been recodified into different sections. So it's currently featured as subsection G of five thirty-five nine site restrictions. Um, it's the same exact language. Um, of note, subsection F, more specifically relates to decks, patios, porches and driveways, uh, which aligns with the origin title. And so the current code five thirty-five nine F, um, the title of that is decks, patios, porches and driveways. No deck, patio, porch or driveway shall be constructed unless a village building permit is applied for and issued by the village in accordance with the requirements of the village code. So as originally adopted, um, like, as I mentioned, the, the origin title related to um, decks, patios and driveways. However, as adopted, this section was adopted outside of that specific regulation. So it has been um, kind of by itself for the last almost forty years. However, within that time, staff has continually administered it in relation to the review of decks, patios, porches and driveways, um, specifically to residential properties. Next slide. So the recommendation that is before the board tonight, um, following this public hearing would align, um, and clarify, but not change the code with respect to applying this thirty percent standard on residentially zoned properties. That aligns, as I mentioned, with longstanding administration. Um, it does not change the thirty percent green space requirement on residential properties, um, which is specifically reviewed when we receive applications for driveways, uh, decks, patios and things of the like. It relocates that requirement alongside those other structure lot coverage components. Um, and it's more comprehensible zoning, it's a more comprehensible zoning code for staff, officials and residents to understand. Of note, commercial properties are regulated through the central district master plan guidelines, which I'll discuss a little further, um, in the, in the presentation. Next slide. So just for more general reference, um, article four zoning districts of chapter five thirty-five specifies lot coverage standards for all of the villages zoning districts. So the top, um, seven districts that are noted in this, in this table here are, relate to, um, single family or duplex properties primarily. Each of those have lot coverage ratios that generally say thirty percent of land for principal structure plus ten percent for accessory structure. So in general, forty percent, unless you're in a corner lot, forty percent of your lot is allowed to be covered with a principal structure or garage. Um, as the asterisk points out, remainder of that lot is regulated by thirty percent green space requirements in relation to the ability to construct structures such as decks, patios, porches and driveways. So that is how the code currently reads and how it's administered. Um, what is different here is that the, the bottom, um, categories here in the zoning districts have no lot coverage restrictions. So primarily commercial structures is which is, um, the, the B districts, there is no lot coverage standards for that. So as opposed to a house where your house can be thirty percent and your garage can be ten percent, commercial districts do not have lot coverage standards. That has been consistent since at least nineteen fifty-six, where the zoning code, um, included the, the following um, section nine, um, dash six oh three lot coverage for commercial properties. Buildings located in the first and third business districts designed, constructed or converted for business uses may occupy as much of a lot as permitted under the requirements, um, of the off-street parking provisions of section nine six oh five. So the commercial properties back till nineteen fifty-six did not have green space requirements, nor have they been administered to this day. Um, next slide. So, um, back to the, uh, the commercial standard, so five thirty-five twenty-one deals with commercial mixed use and river districts within the village. Um, it is codified that the design guidelines shall be part of the review of those properties. And so, um, subsection seven, design guidelines, central district design guidelines, C subsection G shall apply to the construction of new buildings, the structural alteration or addition of existing buildings and any substantial modifications to the exit, exterior of any buildings in this district. Um, for reference, here I pulled out a diagram which is contained within those design guidelines, which show a new building essentially occupying nearly one hundred percent of that lot. Um, more specifically, the site design, um, setbacks are noted in there. Where it says new construction shall follow the village's fifteen, fifteen-foot build-to-line to maintain the district's shopping street wall. I won't read the rest of them, but in general, the design guidelines are intended to provide, um, regulations that bring the buildings closer to the street, fifteen feet from the curb line, actually not the property line, um, which in general prohibits the, um, the usefulness of any sort of open space or green space requirements. Um, and of note, the commercial zoning update is, is in progress for the village, so should, should the board desire to update or change or modify these guidelines? That would be the time to do it with respect to commercial guidelines or with respect to commercial green space coverage. Um, what is before us, that is a clarification that the existing residential, um, thirty percent is not changing, but is specifically applied to those properties, um, when questioned. Next slide. So just for, just for, um, general reference here, this is the intersection of Oakland and Kensington. As you can see, um, both pre-existing development and new development since nineteen eighty-five has not provided thirty percent green space on any commercial properties. Um, if there is open space, it's primarily used for parking or service functions as opposed to the neighboring residential districts, but in which you can see thirty percent lot coverage or thirty percent green space requirements within the front yard, side yard, backyard. So this is a standard, um, overhead shot of what green space in the village looks like. As I mentioned, the commercial properties have not had thirty percent applied to them since nineteen eighty-five adoption. And what is before us here is a clarification in the code that would just relocate that within the decks, patios, porches section and specifically spell out that it relates to residentially zoned properties. Next slide. Um, there's also been some discussion as to how this relates to stormwater. I just want to point out that the, um, intent of the zoning, um, update nineteen eighty-five specifically discussed neighborhood attractiveness and things of that nature. Stormwater is actually covered in a whole separate section, so set chapter two fifty, uh, two fifty slash ten as the purpose, intent and findings of what stormwater management in the village, uh, misregulated for. Of note, that section was completely updated last year. It was repealed and replaced via ordinance thirty twenty-four on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, in conjunction with Wisconsin DNR guidelines. And so the village has recently reviewed and updated those with respect to stormwater management practices. The zoning standards, however, um, related more, more so to, um, neighborhood attractiveness, privacy, things of that nature. Next slide. Uh, this is probably too small to fully read, but this was in the packet. So this is just a, a red line version of what this proposed change would, um, would do. And so within the first section, we would, we would modify the existing introduction to say that no deck, patio, porch or driveway shall be constructed on a residentially zoned lot. Uh, unless a building permit is applied for and obtained by the village, you know, it's too small for me, in accordance with the following, uh, requirements. So once again, we're just clarifying that the following things, decks, patios, porches, driveways, all relate to residentially zoned properties. Um, even beyond green space requirement, this clarification is desired, um, with specific respect to things such as driveways. Um, there are driveways in the commercial district that don't lead towards, um, garages, which is also a requirement within this section. So this is specifically saying that these particular components, decks, patios, porches, et cetera, um, are all designed for residential requirements. Uh, next slide. Um, there's no changes within these particular sections. Next slide. We would relocate the thirty percent lot coverage from section G underneath the section F related to those other functions. Um, we would classify it as green space and add that, um, title to it. We would say, we would keep the, at least thirty percent of each lot shall be planted with grass, shrubs, trees or other forms of vegetation. However, we would include the clarifying language, um, including other ground cover such as mulch or uncompacted stone that shall in no case exceed the amount of vegetation. That was specifically requested by the building inspector who reviews these plans because, um, a, a landscape bed, you know, will have one plant or one tree in it, but have a ground cover of mulch, um, which he is, which he has consistently reviewed as open space or green space within this case. So that is the proposed change that's before us. Um, next slide. Just a general overview of the amendment process. This is detailed in the zoning chapter, article eleven. Um, so as a first step, this, um, issue was discussed at the March twenty-second, uh, two thousand twenty-two plan commission meeting. A recommendation was provided by the plan commission on April twenty-sixth. Um, the public hearing was noticed and published for on May eighteenth and May twenty-fifth. We are here at the public hearing on June sixth, um, on our item number seven A. And possible consideration is agendized on the same item, um, under nine A. That's the end of my presentation.
Okay, so trustee Stokbrand? Um, you referred to, uh, something that was updated with the DNR regarding stormwater. Did you have a slide on the updated? So the, the slide that you showed was the outdated?
No, that's the, that is the new, that's the
That's the current one.
The current code, correct.
Updated with, okay.
Yes, it was like a forty-page ordinance that was adopted last March. I don't have the full details of it. I just kept the purpose and intent statement.
Okay. That was not in the packet, was it? The DNR, the stormwater management thing?
No, I mean, it was discussed in last year's materials, but not in tonight's materials. No, because nothing's changing with respect to that.
Okay, just for reference, because, you know, stormwater and drainage is a concern, so I, but it's not in our packet, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
The proposed update does not relate to stormwater management.
Um, so, thank you. Would you like to ask a question?
No, so we will discuss this in, right?
So procedurally, right, we can ask clarifying questions right now? Okay, um, and then, so I would like to ask a clarifying question, um, specifically because uh, I received a handful of emails asking us to vote no, um, stating a care, a concern that this would remove thirty percent green space standards um, from the code and my understanding, oh, my understanding is.
Be careful what you wish for.
My understanding is that what's proposed tonight is not changing any. So whether we vote yes or whether we vote no, there will be no change in, um, standards that are applied to either commercial, um, applications for development or residential.
From a zoning administration standpoint, that is correct. Nothing would change in my administration of, um, applications. What is being requested is a clarification so that we can communicate how we administer those requirements to both applicants and residents. That thirty percent has never been applied to commercial properties. We review commercial properties with, with, um, respect to the requirements in the central district, um, guidelines, not within those other ones. So this is in, in staff's mind, this is simply clarifying what current procedure is. We would continue to maintain current procedure, um, until directed to do so otherwise.
Okay, and second question, is this related at all, um, to an appeal of the plan commission's, um, approval of the setback?
It's related with respect to it being brought to our attention once again, but this has been a longstanding, um, idea within a zoning code reform. Um, but yes, the appeal definitely provided us the impetus to review and clarify what we, what we currently do. Um, anytime that a, a code issue was brought to my attention, it's my intention to clarify it and update it within the village, within the, uh, code. So um, there's many items within the village zoning code that I think could be updated. This one specifically is being brought because in part, um, it was brought to our attention that is confusing for residents perhaps to understand how we administer it.
So to, um, again, the, the goal of this task before us this evening is to clarify, not to rewrite. Um, but it would not, taking this action tonight, either voting yes or no, wouldn't preclude any rewrite we do of residential code in the future, similar to what we're doing with our commercial zoning code update right now, correct?
Correct.
Two separate things.
Correct.
Okay, so if there are, um, members of the board, members of the public that have ideas about strengthening this code that would fall more within a rewrite or a change of code, those can be taken at this time and then, you know, consider it at a later time.
Correct, I'd be happy to take those down for future, um, discussion. The intent of tonight was simply to clarify what staff currently administers. If the village board wishes to strengthen or, or relieve any of those particular regulations, I'd be happy to have those conversations within future agenda items.
Okay, so that would be a future agenda item. Trustee Kudo, question?
As a point of clarification, I know that we've talked about not changing any code, it's not really changing anything. But it's the, the non-administration of this regulation that, I mean, this is, we would be taking it away from commercial where it currently exists and putting it into just specifically residential because we have not enforced a thirty percent for commercial. Is that my understanding of the situation?
Correct, yes, since nineteen eighty-five, it has not been enforced on commercial properties.
So even though it hasn't been enforced, it's still on the books, it's still something that should have been enforced. Regardless of whether it was enforced or not, it, it is currently the code in the village.
It is the code in the village, but the code in the village is also adopted through the central district guidelines and there's, there's conflict there. And when there's conflict, I, as a zoning administrator, have to choose how best to administer it. And, um, with respect to specifically adopting central district guidelines, that is how I've chosen and that's how previous planning administrators have also chosen to interpret the conflict. And so, um, when, there's plenty of places where the, the code potentially conflicts with each other, I, it's my, um, job to, to pick, you know, how best to do that with respect to the knowledge that I have. As I pointed out, I researched the previous history of this. This was adopted with respect to decks, patios, driveways, et cetera. There was no mention of it impacting commercial properties at the time. Commercial properties have never had this type of, um, uh, regulation on them. So yes, to your point, it, it is a matter of interpretation, uh, and, and that is how I've interpreted the administration of it.
But they have had this since nineteen eighty-five, it just hasn't been interpreted and enforced that way.
Because it conflicts with central master guidelines, which trump the, this level of code. So similar to if our ordinance isn't in line with state statute, we can change our ordinance or not change our ordinance, it's stat, state statute that applies. So we can't, so in, there's an analogy there in that central master district guidelines guide administration of code for commercial zoning.
So if that, final question, sorry. So if that code trumps all of these other codes, then why are we taking this up at all?
Because it was brought to my attention that it was confusing to people, um, who, who don't understand the full administration of zoning code. There's many layers to that. So it was my decision to bring it forward to the plan commission for recommendation to change. The plan commission agreed to recommend changing that. This simply to me is clarifying current practice. It's not changing anything, um, with respect to how the village has developed within the past, you know, thirty-plus years or with how previous or myself, um, zoning administrators have interpreted that conflict.
And I probably misspoke. So the central master, um, central district master are guidelines, just like we have design guidelines that the code refers to as those should be considered when applying code. So for example, the design review board uses the type of design guidelines specifically within our code, but they are referenced in our code for.
They actually are adopted through the code, um, within those sections that I referenced. So the guidelines are a separate document that the code incorporates via adoption. So those are in there. One thing to clarify is those have only been around, I think, since two thousand six or two thousand seven. So that's when that conflict was introduced and perhaps should have been cleaned up since then, as I mentioned. It wasn't, and so this is my attempt to clarify that. And then any, with any, with respect to anything in the commercial district, that would be covered within the ongoing commercial project, uh, commercials owning update project.
I'm not gonna lie, now I'm confused. So the code is more or less important than the district plan?
The district plan is adopted in the code.
But the district plan is a guideline, much like the guidelines that we would use on the plan. It's not necessarily, but what I don't understand is presently, and this is my third meeting, whatever. Um, what I don't understand is the, which one supersedes the other, which one is?
They're both part of the code, so they are both equally codified. My interpretation of, um, the conflict of those is that one is specifically adopted with respect to the commercial district. So when a plan comes in for commercial district review, I use that because to me it's most clear that the intent of that was specifically for commercial properties. As I've mentioned in my research, I also think it's pretty clear that the intent of the nineteen eighty-five adoption was intended for residentially zoned properties. It just wasn't specified. was intended for residentially zoned properties, it just wasn't specified that way. So in my interpretation, I think both are clear. However, I would like to clarify that to make it clear to everyone how I have interpreted that conflict.
Is that better?
Sure, we'll get there.
Attorney Bear?
Thanks, I, I just, I think I could help on that question a little bit. If you look on page 89 of the packet and you really want to know what the lot coverage requirements are for the individual zoning districts, it's article four. And, and there's a chart there on page 89 of the packet. And for example, if you start with R1, and I think one of your chart or one of your slides had this up there. But if you start with R1, it says Lake Drive Residence District Number One. And then over on the right, the second column is lot coverage. And it says, for example, 30% of land for principal structure plus up to 10% for accessory structure. Then it drops down to R2, Lake Drive Residence District Number Two, and it has the same thing. And if you drop down each of those in, in article four of the existing code, every single resident, or every single zoning district has a specific item that either defines lot coverage or doesn't require any lot coverage restrictions as it, as it relates to green space. And then you drop down on the chart to page 90, and when you get to the R8, Esteban Brook Homes Redevelopment District, R9 Apartment House District, P3 Park Preservation District, and so on, you could see there's no lot coverage restrictions in regards to those, those districts. And additionally, the, the B2, B1, B3, B4, B5, none of them have that. And consistent with that, consistent with the, the master plan or the central district master plan, there's examples that were on the slides demonstrating that, you know, in the, in that district, in the
Ziggy stop.
What was that?
I just want to make sure Ziggy stopped.
Oh, okay.
Nothing.
All right. Oh, okay. At any rate, so, and you could, so you can see there's examples in the central district master plan that were also up on the slides and it shows, you know, here, it, it shows an example of the lot, essentially 100% of the lot being used on the commercial space in the district, in the, in the master, or central district. So that's, that's been the case for literally decades. The problem, as I understand it, when if you, and then if you look through the legislative history of how this particular provision that Bart is talking about this evening got adopted. Help me out here, Bart, the, the original, if you look at the legislative history and the document that adopted that, it was titled, I have it down in my notes here, driveways, sidewalks, what was the other one?
Porches and patios.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, there's no doubt that if you look at the legislative history, the purpose and intent when it got passed was to apply to only those residential districts, completely consistent with article four of the zoning district, which tells us what the lot coverage requirements are for every single individual district in the village. So as things got shuffled around within the code, the idea was, well, okay, it's less clear. You know, if I don't start by reviewing article four of the zoning districts in chapter 535, that may be less clear. And to Bart's point, for clarity and ease of interpretation of the code, he's saying, well, why don't we make this a little more consistent and a little more clear to the public as they read through these items? Whether it passes or not, is my understanding is there's not going to be any change in how the code is administered. So I wouldn't say that, you know, it hasn't been enforced. I, I would say that they've been interpreting it properly and in harmony with the way that the code has been, at least since the 1950s. So that, you know, I think that if, that chart on page 89 and 90, I think is really, is really gives you the the, the true sense of, of what the code says that the lot coverage requirements are for every single
Thank you, yeah, and I'll also add that Plan Commission with trustee Kudo and myself are on the Plan Commission and we were part of the vote of the recommendation that April 26th.
Are there any current structures in the business district that have 30% green space?
There very well might be, but I can't point to one. I mean, if you walk up and down Oakland Avenue and commercial and Capital Drive, you're going to see primarily buildings that cover the entire lot. If they don't cover the entire lot, it's usually open space that is the remainder of the lot. So that's parking, service areas. I mean, there's, there's several apartment buildings that I can think of on the north side of Oakland Avenue that will have a slight grass front yard. But beyond that, I can't think of any outstanding properties that would have 30%.
Yeah, so we've got a space, there's a space for sale right across kind of Wood Square Territories, that big open green space where Queensway Cleaners was. And if, if, let's say, for instance, we're going to pass something that says 30% has to be green space. So that private property, how, would have to reserve 30%. If they sold it, they'd have to say, we're selling this property, you have to keep 30% green space. Is that kind of?
Correct, if, if the code were to change.
Which is not the forest tonight, so
That seems, that seems more complicated.
And just for reference, on that particular intersection right across the street, you have the Einstein Bagel property, which has, you know, perhaps some green space on the south side, but the remainder of the lot is parking lot. So it's not green space, it's, it's covered in, in surface parking. Same thing with PNC Bank to the south of that, it's a building with a large parking lot. So green space has never been prioritized within those districts in terms of how they've been developed now. And I would not change my interpretation of moving that forward unless the board specifically changes that through the commercial zoning update project.
Got it.
Okay, question. So if we don't approve the proposed motion here, you're saying that nothing changes, is that?
Nothing will change with respect to how I administer the code. It will, in my mind, it will remain complicated for other people to understand that. And it's, it's a matter of a lot of efforts to describe these conflicts and these situations to people. So the primarily, the primary intent of this is to make it easier for both me and staff and residents or businesses or applicants to understand how the code is being administered.
It just, it sounds to me like, you know, you've chosen the verb to clarify, which to me means that things are not clear, which means that they're open to different interpretation. And in my view, you're asking us to codify something that the majority of the village doesn't want. We do not want a village code that has codified no green space requirement for the commercial district. I don't understand why we're not moving forward with a requirement for green space that we want, instead of codifying that there will be no requirement for green space in the commercial.
A clarifying question?
I have a clarifying question for can you? Can you speculate as to why these were never enforced, why this 30% was never enforced on commercial?
Because I think it was clearly adapted with residential properties in mind. And once again, the, the matter of enforcing or interpreting is, is I think up for discussion here, but in 1985, that ordinance, which I provided as reference, both to Plan Commission and within your packet as a, as a previous link, specifically related to neighborhood attractiveness, did not relate to the commercial district in any sort of a discussion in the minutes of anything that I could find with respect to that. And with all, with respect to all the redevelopment that's taken place since then, not a single property has had 30% green space. All of those have been approved through either planned development districts or through the zoning code and it has not been challenged. I'm bringing this clarification because the current, one of the current redevelopment projects is being challenged and I'm trying to clarify that this is not an acceptable challenge. This is a matter of interpretation.
Could you just tell us what it is?
What, what is?
With the appeal that's being challenged that we're, that is the impetus of this?
The, the appeal is closed as of, I believe, May, whatever, whenever the last Board of Appeals was, it was determined that it was not a founded appeal. Because the Plan Commission does not review these matters.
And so what was the site, what's the?
It's the, it's a redevelopment project at Capital and Stoll.
Thank you.
Okay, at the clarifying question?
Yes, I was just wondering if you could share some more background regarding including mulch and uncompacted stone as fulfilling green space requirements. What was the thinking there, any concern about stormwater issues and related to that?
I mean, yeah, that was a request of the building inspector, just because when plans come in, you know, it's going to show an area of 10 by 10 with like, you know, five plants in there. But so does he just cover the, does he just review the diameter of how that plant grows to maturity? Or does he include the full landscape bed? And so he has always interpreted that to include the full landscape bed. So if it's a 10 by 10 landscape bed, he doesn't have to then go into understanding the, the mature diameter of each specific plant. He can draw a box around that and say, this is landscape bed, not pavement, it's not patio, it's not sidewalk, it's not driveway. It's clear to him that that's a landscaped area. Once again, the intent of the 1985 adoption was to preserve open space, not necessarily permeability. Permeability is probably largely achieved through the same regulation. But if there were specific permeability standards, those would be reviewed in conjunction with chapter 250. So the intent of including mulch specifically is once again to clarify what current practices. But if and when challenged, because residents and applicants do ask like, well, you know, I'm having four plants here, but that, the bed is larger than that. Does this mulch area also include, because it's right now determined as vegetation? I think it's probably questionable as to whether or not mulch is vegetation. So this is once again intended to clarify what current practices, so that the mulched area would also be counted towards the open space requirement.
Thank you.
So again, clarifying, it's that in this, it's, it's referring to percentage of lot space. It's not referring to effectiveness of anything else. But if there are, if this discussion raises recommendations regarding that, that can be taken up as a future item for consideration. So again, and that would fall under a rewrite. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And I'll open the public hearing at 8:09. A refresher to procedures, please come to the microphone, I think you're going to use trustee Lynn's since it has better reception. State your name, your address, and please try to keep, well, please keep your comments to three minutes. Please refrain from any direct criticism of staff. State your position and a few reasons why, and let the next person speak. Thank you. And the reason I asked all those questions was because I know a lot of the emails that I got had specifically questions with that. And again, you can, you can restate your position if you want, but I just wanted you to have that information so it doesn't seem like we're not listening. All right, Mr. Zobick?
Thank you, Paul Zobick, 2504 East Newton Avenue. I will be brief, but before I do, I just want to congratulate our newest trustees, Kudo and Lynn, thank you for serving. And also by way of introduction, I'm an engineer and environmental consultant and stormwater is very near and dear to me. I only have one suggestion, actually, for a slight modification to this proposed language. And let me explain why. One could put in a non-compacted gravel area, underlaying with a plastic sheet or a, a plastic sheet or a geotextile membrane and not achieve any, any stormwater, stormwater protection. It, it might look to the eye as being a permeable porous surface, but indeed, the plastic would, would prohibit the water from infiltrating. And even a geotextile membrane over time gets silted up and would prevent infiltration of water. So for that reason, I, I simply, and I also, by way of introduction, I have read the entire chapter 250 on, on stormwater and the stormwater management. And, and I, and the, the change would be this. Simply, simply adding the words "non-impervious" after the word "be." So the sentence would read, "At least 30% of each lot shall be non-impervious surfaces such as," et cetera, et cetera. And the reason that non, using the term "non-impervious" is that puts a, a performance standard in place. One that already exists in 250 in the definitions in 250. There is a definition for permeable, permeable, excuse me, yeah, permeable and non-permeable. Excuse me, pervious and non-pervious. And there's specific performance objectives already in current ordinance. Matter of fact, it says that post-development infiltration must be at least 90% of pre. So there you have the performance objectives that takes care of, oh, is this compacted? Is it lightly compacted? Is it underlaying with something that makes it impervious? So my recommendation is, is simply to add the words "non-impervious" to that first line. Thank you.
Let's swap out your mic and we'll try to use the other mic down at the end to see if there's a different resolve. Yeah, really. So that's why I say thank you for your time, talent and patience. Thank you, who else would like to speak? I see the, is that Ms. Krieger? Yeah, just pull that down and getting closer. That's what gets really awkward about it. It's really, yeah.
Actually, I respect the work that's been done by the Plan Commission regarding, regarding the business district. I am actually here on the same vein as our line of thought. And it has to do with the proposed section two paragraph that said, "Green space, at least 30% of each lot shall be planted with grass," et cetera. And then staff had requested, "Including other ground cover such as mulch or uncompacted stone that shall in no case exceed the amount of vegetation." And my concern was exactly the concern about underlayments and the fact that there are many items that could be considered ground cover or mulch or uncompacted stone that really don't meet the aesthetic or the implied ideas of Shorewood residents currently, which want to support pollinators, they want to support habitat for wildlife. They want the surfaces to be able to perk as much water when it falls from the sky as possible. So we don't have problems that we've had in the past, like in the 100-year storm, when we had, you know, no place for the water to go, but to fill up the combined sewer and the separated sewers. So my concern with the staff recommended verbiage here is that it seems like they're saying, well, if we allow mulch and we allow stone, then we can just kind of hit the easy button and say, yep, that meets the code. But does it meet what the residents of Shorewood really are trying to achieve in our community? So I have no problem with what's being proposed in the business district. My concern and the reason I'm here is to, one, make sure that we're handling, and I understand stormwater was not intended in this verbiage or this code, but we could potentially unintentionally affect the stormwater runoff if we don't use the proper language when we're changing this verbiage. Because although you are saying, you know, we could do that in the future, we have this opportunity where it's being written now, so why not put in accurate and I don't know, current verbiage that addresses this issue when we're moving it from one spot to another? Why move a problem from one place to another? And now you're potentially causing problems for neighbors affecting other neighbors? All of a sudden, one neighbor decides to put in a whole backyard of mulch with plastic underlayment and now it's running off into the neighbors. That's my concern as a Shorewood resident. I don't want it going into the storm sewer and I really don't want it negatively affecting other neighbors. So that's why I'm here and those are my major concerns. I, unlike Mr. Zobick, who is so prepared, I did not prepare adequate verbiage. But before this segment requested by staff, I would like to just ask that it be reviewed with those items in mind, even if it has to be reviewed with other staff members or committees. I just think that if it's being moved, move something that's a positive for the village. Don't deal with one problem moving it and then Don't deal with one problem moving it and then maybe or maybe not clarifying it because it's not very clear to me at this point. Thank you. And I didn't give my address, sorry. Oh, 1416 East Lake Bluff Boulevard in Shorewood. Patricia Krieger. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a reminder that we'll take all the comments so as we don't get into a back and forth, but then we might ask for more information during deliberation. Okay, yes. A little technical. Yes, sir, in the blue zip up. I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
John Frederick, 2608 East Newton Avenue in Shorewood. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I understand that the planning commission has proposed to change the ordinance. Now, it's been said that it's just a interpretation, a codification of an interpretation that's been in effect, but the it actually amounts to a rather substantial change since we're effectively changing the 30% green space to 15% if we can cover up to half of the 30% with with rocks or mulch. And I think the idea of reducing the percentage is subject to green space requirement seems ill-advised and contrary to the best interest of the village and its property owners. It's been said that the intent of this change was, or the original ordinance was aesthetics. And that may be true, but I think that we must it should be consideration now that the increase in amount of rainwater, stormwater that we've been experiencing in recent years can have a major impact on our property. I have several problems with the proposed change. First of all, it would reduce the amount of green plants from 30% to 15% and allow up to 15% of mulch or unpacked stone. Because green plants have a higher rates of infiltration, percolation and retention of water, this change will significantly reduce the amount of water that soaks into the ground and will dramatically increase the amount of stormwater runoff. And then the term uncompacted stone is undefined and sufficiently vague as to make it possibly unenforceable. What exactly is uncompacted stone? And what does uncompacted mean? Does it include gravel, land and stone, granite boulders, patio blocks, bricks, concrete? Does it include all sedimentary and metamorphic rocks, which are naturally compacted? Some of these uncompacted stones are completely impervious and will effectively eliminate any infiltration, percolation or retention of water. And while some mulch may allow for some infiltration or percolation, it will not be as effective as green plants and therefore represents a reduction from the current standard. And the term mulch is also undefined and sufficiently vague as to make it difficult or impossible to enforce. Would six inches of mulch satisfy the requirement of the ordinance? Or would a quarter inch of mulch satisfy the intent of the ordinance? This mulch naturally decays. It will quickly become bare earth, which also provides less infiltration, percolation retention. In addition, some or all of the mulch can be washed away in a significant rain. Would there be some requirement that to add additional mulch on a regular basis? Or do they only have to satisfy this requirement at one point in time? Then currently, millions of dollars are being spent by the MMSD to accommodate increasing volume of stormwater. Should the village of Shorewood be working to make the MMSD's job more difficult by increasing amount of water that is directed into the storm sewers? In the past, the village has distributed free rain barrels to reduce stormwater runoff and have ordered the disconnection of gutters from the sewer system. Does it make sense for the village of Shorewood to reverse course and encourage the amount or increase in stormwater runoff that will end up in the sewers? The amount of rain in Shorewood has been increasing in recent years and is likely to increase in the future. Therefore, I don't believe that this change makes a whole lot of sense. Case in point, the owners of the house at 2611 East Beverly have recently re-landscaped their yard and built a new garage. In the process, they have dramatically reduced the amount of land covered by green plants to less than 20% of their lot. They now have a significant water problem. They have no place to go with the water resulting from a normal rainfall. Therefore, they're diverting it onto their neighbors' properties. They have created a nuisance with the blessing of the village of Shorewood and helped to create a situation where we had odds with our neighbor. Does it make sense that we shouldn't tolerate, much less encourage, this type of behavior? Thank you for the opportunity to give my views. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
Bill DC 3952 North Stoll. So as trustee Buckbren said, I really think this is interpretation inadequate. I really think that you could interpret it to simply say it applies to I think there's an argument for that. Just because it has happened in the past doesn't mean it's right. So moving forward, we know a lot more about stormwater. A lot of things that have changed. As folks have said, the deep tunnels, something that can be done very high cost, very high cost way to minimize overflows. I mean, this is a very cost-effective way to minimize overflows. Really appears to be a real reason to change. All the sunseek development and perhaps future developments, build the entire sites without maximizing of apartments profits. So just like the parking requirements and the rules were changed, we're going to see the sunseek parking. Here to the board is seeking to change the favor that rather than what ultimately only alter and have thanks.
Thank you. Next. Yes. If you could just please speak more into the microphone and state your name and address again. Thank you.
Ted's address, 4018 North Stoll. And I agree with the comments just prior to me. And I think the reason almost everyone is here is because of the sunseek. And it seems like we moved here a little over 20 years ago because Shorewood was beautiful. It wasn't the city we moved from. We moved here to raise and a lot of changes have gone on at 20 years. And it seems like this development at stolen capital is more of what's happening or has happened on and it to us is too. Doesn't feel as much like Shorewood. And changing the rules to get more urban sprawl in a community that historically has been the opposite of urban seems wrongheaded.
Thank you. Next. Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Walsh. I live at 4024 North Stoll Avenue. And I think we need to clarify a couple of things. You know, I don't, I don't have sites for you. Maybe the village attorney could be more clear, but the zoning code is the primary authority and central district business plan is like a regulator, a regulation. So whatever, whatever this body does that the zoning code says is what should not the clarification is being asked for because there is a confusion and clarify the confusion. We don't want to clarify the confusion. My understanding is state laws, more restrictive requirement is the one that's that being said, the whole idea here is, is to get the village board to tell the staff what code said. The staff has said a couple of things that the history back from 1956 is that the the commercial properties had zero green space requirement. So going on back, all the way back to 1956, houses were, or the buildings were much smaller. Lot sizes were much smaller. There was a great deal of granularity how village had developed. The issues that we're talking about now were not faced by the village. Not something that any of the village trustee and any of the planning administrators have faced lately. But one thing that I wanted to make sure that we clarified is that there's a section that that's quoted in Bart's presentation that says, section 9-603 lot coverage for commercial property. As buildings located in the first and third business districts designed, constructed or converted for business uses may occupy as much of a lot as permitted under the requirements of the off-street parking provisions of section 9.605. So the argument is being made that, hey, this has always been, the thing is, we've changed all kinds of other parts of code and, and all those other parts of the code end up working together. So I don't think it's realistic to say, hey, this part of the code we didn't touch. We've always been thinking about it this way. All these other changes that we made to the code, well, they don't, they don't really impact this one place. That's very disingenuous, if you ask me, and I don't think it's, it's any of the residents here would would agree that's the right way to interpret the code. Then we talked about 1985, the code provision. It basically says, stated goal was to perpetuate attractive street views, neighborhoods, maintain privacy and encourage development and preservation of open space in the village. Got it. Open space in the village. So in the ensuing years, ensuing almost 40 years, there's been a lot of development in the, in the village. And really importantly, the intersection of Kensington and Oakland where it's a great example of what we did. And by and large, nobody complains about that. Some of the neighbors around that area are concerned about the amount of parking that that the restaurants take up in the evenings. I've heard those complaints, but by and large, everything else is okay. They're four-story buildings. They met all of the, 100% of the off-street parking requirements that the village had in place at the time. They have ground floor retail. Everybody's happy. Then we move on to the next couple of large projects. The large projects were all PUDs. PUDs are zoning classifications unto themselves. They get, the rules get made up as the developer and the municipalities work together, the planning staff and because it's a zoning change and the village board all determine how the village is protected. What happened was that the residents really don't like the, the projects that ended up happening on the south end of Capitol or north of, north, south end of Oakland, north of Capitol. The Metro Mart and the Light Horse and the Mosaic are reviled. Lots of people in this town have, have said they hate them. All we're saying here is that we have an opportunity to not perpetuate that kind of development, the stuff that has started the fighting, the start, the things that have made people upset in this town about the direction of development. If we go back to what we did at Kensington, you'd get a lot more cooperation, but that's not what you're doing. You're, you're allowing the staff to go ahead and continue something that is clearly objected to by the residents.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes, ma'am.
The three-minute mark has exceeded. It's now at four mark. I saw you wave me away, but I would like you to stick with the three months.
I'll wrap it up. So the residents are unhappy. And then our planner, Cribbit Drug, just said, quote, a few minutes ago, green space has not been prioritized. If you have heard anything from this village, if you've gone to any of the planning meetings, the public input meetings, what I hear again and again and again are, we want green space. Do we want fields, meadows? No, but we want green space as part of our commercial districts. They are a critically important, critically important part of our neighborhoods and really need to have a zoning code that meets the requirements of, meets the advanced requirements of the residents. This is not how you get peaceful community. So I'd, I'd like you to really think about what you vote here. I'd encourage you to vote no, because if you vote no, what that really means is that there is a 30% green space requirement to commercial property in the village.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to be heard on this matter?
Yes, please.
Okay, there's somebody on Zoom. I can hear you, but I can't see you. There are three individuals who have their hands up currently on Zoom. The first being Jennifer Volbus.
Hey, I'm, I'm not quite sure, do I turn on my video to?
Yes. Ms. Volbus, you can turn on your video and audio. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Jennifer Cooney Volbus, 4331 North Alpine Avenue. And the, the residential code for the apartments, it's not clear to me is if, if it's a large apartment building, why it is not being required to have the 30% green space as well, when there's other duplexes that are completely rented out and those are, those are, I consider those businesses, I don't know if you guys do, but I think that should be kind of considered. It feels to me like the aesthetics of the village have been pushed aside for the last 10 years on making it, making development the number one priority. And I think aesthetics really is a huge part of any decision that should be considered for any zoning codes. I also feel like a lot of this stuff is not totally transparent and since we're having a building code meeting and, and having all the, all sorts of residents getting involved in being involved with the building code, it seems that this would be a perfect opportunity to wait for the decisions that the, that the residents are, are discussing. And I guess the next meeting is June 16th. So why, what's the rush? So anyway, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next individual on Zoom is Kimberly Christine. Kimberly, if you can turn your camera on and your audio.
Sure. So I'm hiding in my upstairs bathroom, so forgive me, so my children don't run in the room. So my name is Kimberly Lickie. I live at 3900 North Prospect Avenue. It seems about every day we hear more and more dire news about the climate and need to drastically increase conservation efforts to mitigate climate change. I'm hoping for changes to the code that both codify the same or an increase in green space, so right in enforcement mechanism. So I highly recommend that any change in the code be developed in conjunction with MMSD and other stakeholders and not with developers, builders, or the opinions of non-experts. I work in a community that is suffering from generations of paving over green space and tree removal. I work at Ninth and Mitchell in a public building and we're working closely with the project managers at MMSD to implement bio swales and tree replacement in our community. And it is a very arduous process and extremely expensive. And it is a lot easier to maintain existing green space than to pave over it and then try to remediate it later when the consequences in terms of stormwater runoff, just, you know, the, the lack of curb appeal for selling and renting businesses and the urban heat island effect really become apparent. So, you know, prevention is much better than the cure in this case. You know, I really hope that I, maybe you will allow me to provide the name and contact information of the project developer that we're working with, and they might be able to help you make decisions that would, you know, take into account the consequences of, you know, non-enforcement and just getting rid of the requirement for there to be green space. So and, you know, a lot of the, the new developments that we're doing in our, in the community I work in also utilize like native plants. So we're also creating habitat for wildlife, which I knew was really important. So we're also creating Habitat for Wildlife, which I knew was really important to this community. Thank you.
The next person on Zoom is Rosina Bloomingdale. Rosina, if you could please turn on your camera.
Hi, Rosina Bloomingdale, thirty nine fifty eight North Stoll Avenue. So I don't have a lot to add to everyone else because they seem to have covered most of those comments quite well. But environment is critical to life and quality of life. And so I would like to see that. I understand that the codes are in conflict of one another, but that does not mean that we can't rectify that conflict in a positive manner for the environment and for the quality of life within Shorewood, as well as the aesthetic values. So just my my take on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public who would like to be heard? Yes, sir. That there's actually one other individual on Zoom. Oh, I apologize. Their hand raised. Sorry. Thank you, sir. I'll be quicker to speak up. We have Laura Arno.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that if the village passes.
Could you put your address?
Laura Arno, I'm at three nine six six North Lake Drive.
Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate, if the village passes the current proposal with the change in F five that says that includes mulch and uncompacted stone, you're effectively changing it from thirty percent to fifteen percent green space. I mean, there's just no question. It doesn't matter what you're doing with the commercial district, any of the other things, you're you're effectively sneaking that in and changing it from thirty percent to fifteen percent. Because stone and mulch is not vegetation. It's not green space. So I just I just want to clarify that, and I I would really encourage you not to pass that. And and I agree with everything else that has been said by all the other individuals tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? No, no additional. All right. Okay, we'll go back to this gentleman.
Bill Hunt, thirty eight fifty North Lake Drive. I I appreciate that we're getting a clarification of this ordinance. And I the way I see it and the way I've talked to other people in the town, oh, some people are disappointed about some of the other work that's been done here. Isn't this an opportunity for us to clarify going forward that we would want it more green? I fought last summer big time for to save the trees on Lake Drive, and we're still going to probably lose these no matter what. But if we were to cut down all that and we admit we lose all that, we're just kind of going in a bad direction, and we need to kind of take this opportunity to say, hey, you could still build something tasteful, and you can still have plenty of green spaces, all kinds of developers. They have great ideas that you can go ahead and do this. And it just seems if we keep going the way we're going, we're going to make this a great big thermal island. And that would be a shame. And this could be the opportunity for us is a clarification to go on doing everything the way it was meant to be from nineteen eighty five and clarify the right. That's all.
Thank you. Other members who would like to be heard?
Forty two twenty two North Larkin. And also Chair of the Conservation Committee. Another way to green spaces, a bunch of vacant buildings. If we make the commercial building code so restrictive that nobody will build here, then what we'll get. But my question is more. Are there other communities that have demanded thirty percent green space from commercial property developers? I guess is that we can't name one.
We'll hold that question and then
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there other questions?
Yeah. So I guess I would encourage the discussion to move back toward the residential space, which is where our staff is interested in clarifying. I I really like the suggestions from Mr. Zovik and adding some clarifying language about the permeability of those surfaces and making sure that it's effectively pervious. And yeah, that's all. But I I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that part of the code, because I think really that's where we probably have more influence on form water inspiration. None of us can point to a single example in the village where thirty percent green space was or would ever be on a commercial property. So I I although the sentiments are charming, I just don't think it's very realistic, and it will end up just leading to more vacant buildings, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on Zoom? All right, hearing none and seeing no hands in the audience here, I will move to or I will close the public hearing at eight forty four PM. Thank you. President McKay, we do have the village engineer now.
Yes.
So I just want to, I don't know if you want to go into new business at nine A or revert back to item four. I would appreciate going back to item four since we do have the engineer on. Are there any objections?
I would object. Yeah, I would object only because everyone has spoken, there's folks online. We just went through this to sort of pause all of them and make them wait for the village engineer. I would let's, I would prefer to wrap this up and then move on to the the next item.
Okay. Is that I I heard some other, so general will. Okay, can you make that adjustment?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. We do have item eight, citizens to be heard. Is there a will to re-put that later in the agenda as well? Although there may be, are there any citizens to be heard that are not related to the ordinance? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, good. There are no citizens to be heard this evening, so we can move on to item nine, new business, nine A. Consider ordinance three zero four two and ordinance amending site restriction regulations related to green space requirements contained within Article Three, General Provisions of Chapter five thirty five zoning. I would like to take any like to give Director Griben Trogg the chance to respond where if there were any points made during the public hearing that may be of interest to the board in deliberating. We had, in summary, we had Ms. Krieger who with Mr. Zovik, who made the recommendation around impervious versus pervious materials, Ms. Krieger, who supported that issue, wanting more clarification. Mr. Frederick, similarly. Mr. D saying not feeling not that we hadn't made the right interpretation. Mr. Zistrist seems like it's changing the rules for one development and in in particular, the development at the Sunseeker's location. Mr. Walsh made several contradictions based on the opinion staff brought forward and the recommendation of the Plan Commission. Ms. Volpus wondered if multi-unit buildings are residential since they hold tenants similar to duplexes. Ms. Kimberly talked about climate change and wanting that thirty percent green space applied to commercial zoning. Mr. Libertori stated that he wondered if any community has demanded thirty percent green space be applied to resident commercial plans in their commercial district. And so that's a direct question. But also said he didn't support that application and but is interested in more exploration of the permeability of organic matter, if you will.
Sure, a brief response to that. I have no issues with adding non non-impervious, if that's the right term. I sometimes that gets flipped in my head sometimes, right? So at least thirty percent of each lot shall be non-impervious plants with grass. I would have no objection to that clarification if that is the will of the board with respect to the ordinance before you tonight. With respect to knowing whether or not other communities have thirty percent green space requirements at commercial properties, I would believe the answer is no, but I can't say that because I have not researched that. So if that was desired information, I would need to research that and bring that back to the board at a future date, but I don't have that information in front of me. I just understanding what commercial properties look like in the general area, even in Whitefish Bay, I don't see thirty percent green space covering any commercial property. Duplexes are residentially zoned, and so duplexes do have the thirty percent green space. It's when you're a greater than three units that you become multifamily commercial. So that's when that would change. But that is covered in different aspects of the zoning chapter as well. So once again, no objection to the to the addition as suggested to clarify additional pervious or impervious area. And that's all.
Okay. Yeah, so I think so at this time we can open it up for trustee discussion and deliberation. I think I would like to, I just want to put out some guidelines because, you know, we did have some statements sort of challenging the information presenting tonight and the and the position under which this recommendation is coming forward. And, you know, either, I guess what I want to check out is within our group with the village board, are you accepting that this is a clarification? Or are you feeling that this is a rewrite? If you feel that it's a rewrite, then I don't want to take it as if it's a clarification, you know, because we're not going to be talking about the same thing. The other thing is that if there is the general consensus that this is a clarification as presented to us in the memo and as recommended from Plan Commission, and we proceed as such, if there's interest in that thirty percent green space in in commercial zoning, understanding that that's a future item of consideration, that we're not going to take that up tonight, and that it can be taken up under the commercial zoning update project that's going that's ongoing right now. It also doesn't preclude us from taking up residential code rewrites in the future in a more cohesive manner. So I want to really keep clear what it is that we're doing here tonight with the understanding that there are, you know, a room full of neighbors who want us to vote no on this. Okay, and are in some are in disagreement that with our interpretation of how staff has been administering and the disagreement with the Plan Commission and the Design Review Board for that matter. So, you know, I just want to acknowledge that in the room so that we're clear about what we're doing. The other thing that I wanted to acknowledge is that, you know, I can't account for the disagreement that's present this evening. But it does seem to be largely stemming from one particular development that's proposed and is a design by right and and is by law can move forward to to get building permits. If we were to change administering the code after thirty years over this one development or the next development that comes up, that's a liability to the, you know, that's not just a disagreement, that's a liability to the village. So as trustees this evening, our first job is fiduciary to the village. And so, you know, taking, we are gonna, you know, I am gonna ask Nathan for his opinion. And I just want that to be out there and and to be clear that 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 I'm very clear about that. I know that we've been threatened that we'll be tossed off the board if we vote a certain way. Threatens don't really work for me. And I just think that I I just need to let you know that it's very clear about what our job is here tonight. It's great if everybody goes feeling goes home feeling like they won, but if we open the village to liability, that's not a win. So the other thing is that I am sure that the that the information presented here this evening is correct. And so I don't want this to become also sort of an indirect kind of undermining of of staff and the Plan Commission and the Design Review Board is we can be in disagreement. That's fine. I can't account for that, but I am confident that the information before us is correct and that all staff has made sure of that. So you can take confidence in that. I am, let's see. And I'm sure that rewriting code is beneficial in a cohesive manner. And so again, we can do that in the future. We do these cleanups from time to time. We've done several of them, not since the board changed over in in April, but on the past year, we've done several. So that part is not unusual. And Josh and Nathan, just a general question before we get started, is your interpretation or is is it your opinion that we are changing rules for a developer by considering this tonight? Is that your intention?
No, I would just point out there's two developments that are under consideration, also one at Lake Bluff that has not received any discussion or or, you know, appeal to that matter. So the the interpretation has been the same for both of those redevelopments. So I this is not changing anything with respect to how I administer the code. No.
Okay. So first, a poll, a clarification, is the consensus of the board that you're seeing this tonight as a clarification as to which it's being brought forward under the the memo? Thumbs up. Thumbs up.
I don't understand the question. First of all, I'd like to note, what was that you just you you had said something, just I didn't quite understand what the context of the previous conversation was.
Just clearing up, there was a concern that somehow we're changing the rules by taking this up tonight out of, you know, instead of doing a cohesive rewrite of all our code at one time, that somehow bringing this forward as a clarification is changing the rules for one developer. And I just wanted to clearly ask staff if that was their impression of what they were doing or that they've been asked to do that, or if that's their intent.
Correct. My clarification was this is not in response to one developer or one development. I mentioned there's two developers, two developments going on right now. Also one at Lake Bluff in Oakland, and there's been no question or appeal to interpretation of that language with respect to that development. It's only been to this other one.
Understood, but this this came Is it in response to two developers then?
Excuse me, Ms. Christine, we're going to pause on the public comment for right now as the board deliberates, and then if they choose to open up the floor again, the village president will
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But just to be clear, this and it's it's in the memo that this came up because of an appeal process.
Correct.
That's why we're here.
The other one was not appealed, and so my interpretation and the other one was not challenged. So the reason it was brought to the attention of cleaning it up was with respect to legibility of the code.
Through an appeals process with the Sunseeker site, right?
It's two separate. Right.
Well, that's why it was brought forward, if that's what it said in the packet.
Right.
I didn't deny that. Correct.
Okay. And my other question is, if we're concerned about liability, do we need to move this at a future meeting into a closed session to speak with our attorney?
No, it doesn't follow under closed. It's not negotiations.
So that's not with the liability. What's about the liability wasn't about this.
Yeah, it's not.
Or would we?
Oh, I don't need to answer. You're asking the attorney.
Sure.
Is this a closed session discussion?
I'm not sure exactly what specific item is being asked to be considered in a closed session, but let me give you a general. If 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 the body wants advice or a legal opinion, effective, written, you can sort of at this point, I'm not sure that there is.
Because that's the understanding I got from what President McKay was saying was she mentioned the word about a possible if we're if there's possible legal jeopardy, then we should go into closed session to discuss this and put it on a future meeting.
Nope, I said that my intent, my, the meaning was, what I do know, what I am confident is, is, is if is if we don't administer code consistently. Is if we don't administer code consistently. Then and we interfere with somebody's property rights. That's a liability. That could be a liability. I'm not saying that anybody's bringing that forward. I'm cautioning. Yes.
So I think the question that you're asking, if I'm understanding correctly, is if we start interpreting code. Differently than it's written, would that potentially? Objectives to like be a. Is that the question? Well, that's. Yeah, I mean, I, well, let me, let me answer that this way, though. I still think the the chart on page eighty nine. You look, this is, it's article four of the zoning code. Chapter five thirty five shows all the zoning district. And they're all listed in order, and it starts with Lake Drive Residential District one, two, three, and four. And each of those have explicit. Lot coverage requirements associated with green space. Then you get down to. B one, B two, B three, mixed use, commercial, et cetera, et cetera. There are no, in contrast, there are no lot coverage restriction relating to green space on those. If anybody asks me, where do I find in the code what the lot coverage requirements are with, you know, green space with respect to. District that I'm going to develop in, this is where I tell them to go. And it explicitly has. Requirements for those residential districts, and it has no such requirements on the commercial district. So I don't know how else to tell you other than it doesn't even seem close to me. What the the problem came in. That with respect to this passage of this ordinance in five, there was some recodification. Things got moved around and then the heading that was on the, you look at legislative history that talks about, I had. Driveways, sidewalks.
X pad.
Yeah, there we go. Wasn't in the heading that when it got codified into the. Code, and people were saying, well, this doesn't. You know, I'm having difficulty, the code isn't as clear as it could otherwise. And my understanding of this is make it easier for citizens to look at the code, to read the code and. How the different disparate parts, there are parts of the code fit together and what the regulations. So to me, I see this as cleaning it up. For the purpose of making it more user friendly for the public. You know, if 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 there were, now you have, you absolutely have the right, you could say, you know, down the road. We want to create thirty percent green space requirement in the commercial district. You have the right to do that. You can absolutely, for the policy decision you want to. Ten percent, twenty percent, forty percent, you can do that. There's a, there's a policy. But that's probably the last. Being forward if you do that, but you know, you can, you can do that. So I, you know, the question right now. You know, Bart brought this word, and I thought years ago, when Bart, when you first started here, I thought that there was some discussions of. Cleaning the code up in general, and this was one of them, I thought that was on the long range radar. Way before any of the the current issues. The developments, but in the context of, you know. Questions and answers and evaluating these additional developments that have come up. Here so, you know, I have Bart's credit, you know, to say, well, I think the code could be clearer than it is. So. Whether you vote to change it or not change is up to you, but it's still going to be interpreted in my mind. Consistent tomorrow morning, regardless of going to be interpreted consistently correctly with. Article four, chapter five thirty five, which lays out. Explicitly for every single zoning district in the village. What the requirements are with respect to green space. That's all, that's all.
So this, Mr. Walsh, I do see your hand, but we've closed public comment for now. So if somebody needs to hear more from you, they can make a motion to the chair for that. So I would like to open it up to the trustees at this time. So there's general consensus, it seems like majority that we're taking this as a clarification. So with that, I would like to open it up for discussion and maybe go around once. And if there's a motion, that's great, and we'll go from there.
I just want to say that I, I, there's a majority that agrees that this is a clarification. I am not in that majority.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, that's fine. You said majority. You didn't say unanimous.
Right.
But I do, I do not agree that this is just a clarification of the code. I think this. Even Attorney Bear just said we would change the code. So this is a change, not a clarification.
Well, my point was you have the ability. Can change the percentage to anything. You can make the change, you could make it eighty percent.
Sure, but we're changing it. We would be changing it from thirty percent to zero percent. On commercial.
So we'll hold that. So is that also then, are you taking back your vote from the plan commission to recommend?
Is that something I can do from the village board?
No, but I just wanted to.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, trustee. Exactly. No, no, no. Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, but that was, it seemed like a disingenuous question. So, no, I'm not taking my vote back from the plan.
Trustee Baldoff.
So I just want to say, I think that this is clearly whether the words don't matter whether it's a clarification or a change. It's a change for the people in this room and for everyone in the village of how this is being. Presented and interpreted. Well, I guess not interpreted because we'll do business the same way, but I don't. I don't want to be in a process where, and I've said this, President McCabe mentioned several other. Code clarifications, changes, whatever you want to call them, over the past, you know, little more than a year since I've been on the board. And every single time. Those have come up, I have said that my preference is to make changes in a more comprehensive way. That way we don't make one small change that leads to more small changes and more small changes down the road, but to make these in. A much more comprehensive way that allows for more input from the public and allows for more conversation among the board. More time for staff to be able to recommend other changes that might complement one of the changes we're considering. And not have to be constantly making these little small changes in a kind of piecemeal way. I also think, you know, we've talked a lot about what what the intent may have been almost forty years ago. When it comes to this piece of code and my intent now, and I think most everybody here would agree. Our intent now is is a lot different. We know a lot more about the impacts of climate change. We know a lot more about the benefits of green spaces in our communities. And I don't think that we should be trying to go back and clarify the intent of something almost forty years ago. When we have an opportunity now through our, you know, building code revision through the commercial zoning update to think about what we want for the future of this village. I don't want to make a change about what people thought forty years ago. I want to think about what can we do now to preserve this village, preserve. The the community everybody cares about and make sure that we are in a very good position. You know, to kind of be a leader in the Milwaukee area when it comes to how are we going to make changes? To make our village more sustainable and to make it more resilient for years to come.
Thank you. Go around, trustee Ursink.
Just a, I mean, I've just got, I'll make it quick. So if we're going to change the language to non impervious, is that going to, can we do that tonight or is that going to take a bigger discussion?
You could do that within the motion.
We can do that within the motion. And then, you know, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to wrap my head around thirty percent. I am, you know, such an advocate for Shored's environment, for green spaces. But to require businesses to create thirty, the whole business district, every business requires thirty percent green space is. I, it's unheard of. It's just not realistic. No business is gonna, is going to 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 move here. And I think that's the intention. Of most of the residents here tonight is they don't want a development to occur. So they're looking at every possible angle for this not to happen. And that's what's happening right here. So I, you know, I just think it's unreasonable. I think it's frankly, it's selfish. I think we're talking about new residents coming into our village, and I'm trying to welcome new residents into our village, and this goes directly against that. And I. You know, I'm all in favor of green space and keeping our green spaces vibrant and doing what we can to protect them. But to to require thirty percent green spaces on our business district is just unreasonable. It's just unbelievably unreasonable to me.
Trustee Yandover.
Yeah, I would agree with trustee Baldoff on the larger topic of just more comprehensive form versus these periodic. It's needed as any be. I generally do view this as a clarification. I think the intent was very clear. I mean. If, you know, if there had been a debate about going from zero percent to thirty percent, it probably would have materialized in the minutes of legislative history. We're not seeing that. So I think everyone had a pretty common understanding of what was being talked about at the time. Agree with. For. Residential.
Thank you. Trustee Stokbrand.
I agree with trustee Baldoff. I would rather take a comprehensive approach, which is one of the reasons why. Trustee Ursink and I are both on the commercial zoning update task force. I'll call it for lack of a better word. And so we are taking an approach and we're starting with the the business district and we'll have this done by the end of the year. And so if we vote no tonight. We allow the process to go forward because by the end of the year. We will have addressed this question in the commercial zone code with all the input that we're getting from the public. And so I just think we should let the process run its course. I mean. To Bart's credit and staff, they have led us down this road. We went, I was involved in a comprehensive plan last year. And now I'm happy to work on this commercial zoning update. So I don't see any reason to clarify this now. In your words, not mine, when we are going to fix this by the end of the year, and and I agree, thirty percent may seem high. But that's not the point. The point is, we should put in there a number that we want. Do we want two percent? Do we want five percent? What's reasonable? Let's let the process run its course. We're, we're spending fifty thousand dollars. On a consultant to redo our commercial zoning update. So. I'm going to vote no and work on the process for the end of the year so we can get the commercial. Zone to say what what we really think it should say for green space. Thank you.
Clear, could I just clarify? Is there any? If, for example, we voted yes tonight, would it preclude the process from? Because there could still be a recommendation from that group to put a number in to trustee.
Correct, yes.
Trustee Lynn.
Yes, thank you. So I think, you know, I'm okay with looking at this as a clarification specifically because. And correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if we don't specifically write this as residential. Do we not have a residential rule in place going off of Eric's logic from earlier saying? If the law was originally written as thirty percent green space for commercial. District. And the idea here is to move it from commercial into residential, if I'm understanding that correctly.
The original adoption didn't clarify commercial versus residential. So that, as adopted, it just says thirty percent green space on each lot.
Okay, so this is to separate.
This would clarify that the intention as administered through the zoning office. Is that the intention in nineteen eighty five was that related to residential? And it's never been administered with respect to commercial, particularly since the adoption of the centralistic master plan guidelines. Which have documents and and shell statements that don't include green space or open space.
Okay, and then my second thing would be with regards to. The thirty percent and including the ground cover such as mulch and things like that. On my own property, I've been. Actively trying to take less and less grass and put in more and more things that are not just grass. And in the winter, it's a lot of mulch under the snow. It really takes, you know, the spring and the summer for the vegetation to really grow up through that. So, you know, I, from that perspective. You know. I'm I'm okay with this language because it, given Zovik's addition there. Of the non impervious surfaces, because I think that helps us get away from more and more grass and include more native plants is to have more opportunities to. Plant different, different shrubs. And things like that. So I I think overall I'm okay with this, but then it just to agree with trustee Stoke brand as well, I think. It's definitely worth looking into the future. Is there a number that we want for commercial space, two percent, five percent, whatever it is? Because I think while we're in this process, we have the opportunity to do this. So I'm okay just approving this now and moving forward, but I do think we need to be thinking about. What that number is for commercial space going forward. Thanks.
And to clarify, if, would we need to have that in the motion, or do you think that that would naturally come up within the zoning code update process?
It will naturally come up with the zoning code. It's a form based code so that the primary driver is defining what forms. The central, the commercial district should have. And so if the community and the plan commission and the board desire for there to be. Five percent and percent green space as part of the form, that would need to be codified as language within that. So. It will naturally come up within that conversation. I don't need it in a motion is what I.
Okay, and then to trustee Baldoff's point around, you know, sort of bringing in cleanup. Fixes, you know, proposals versus a, you know, a bunch at a time, because we would still need to approve each one. So just like we did with the parking code, there were several. Sections of that that we need to update and we took them separately, but they came to us in a batch. Is that kind of more what you're thinking?
Yes, I mean, I would just like to, you know, think of these things more holistically so people have the opportunity to understand how certain changes might work with other changes. Because I think when we bring them, you know, at one meeting and then a couple months later, you may have forgotten, oh, well, there was this other change and how could these interact with one another? And then I think just having, having more information at once, I think is going to be, is going to be helpful in understanding what the bigger. Bigger picture goals are and, you know, why are we making these changes, I think helps to get a lot. I think it'll help to get a lot to the why.
Okay, thank you. So I guess just to drill down on that a little bit, would there be a specific motion that you would look for tonight that's different than what's in the packet? To get us going in that direction versus. Because one option tonight is that we move to defer this, you know, and we don't take action on it. You know, rather than forcing it to a vote, you know, that's an option too.
I, I am going to be a no on this, and I am not saying I am opposed to any changes, but I would like to see. These changes, any changes that might come to this, I would like to see as part of that broader. That broader work that trustee Stoke brand talked about. So that would be my, that would be my preference. If we get there by voting this down or just deferring it to say we need to have this conversation as part of the broader picture. I, you know, if it comes to a vote, I am not going to vote for this, but if the better mechanism to get. The kind of. Clarity that our community is looking for here is, you know, part of the big reform and needs just a deferral, I would, I would consider that.
Okay, does that make sense to you, Bart, as an option? So then it would kind of go more towards trustee Stoke brand's point of just not taking action on this tonight, and it'll come up naturally. In the zone code option, in the zone code update process. And then another option is that we could pull out the the residential language if that feels like that's done tonight. And sort of leave the commercial as all part of the zone code update with that or no?
I don't know how you could separate them at this point because right now the reason that there's confusion in in my hearing of things is that. People, some people think it relates to all of them. So to me, the clarification is. Clarifying residential versus commercial. I think you can do one without the other. So yeah, and then I guess just to that point, we are doing a commercial zoning update, so I wouldn't expect any other residential components to come within that. Frameworks, that's not part of the scope, but clarifying open space or green space, whatever the. Desire would be would would naturally come out of that process. If there were any desires to have any sort of percentages or. Specific, you know. Setbacks or build two lines or things of that.
Okay. All right, thank you. So and trustee Coda, I'd like to offer you an apologies. I didn't mean to put you on the spot or anything like that. I really wasn't my intent. So I'm sorry that it came across that way. Trustee Stoke brand.
I'd like to cede my time at the microphone to Mr. Walsh, please.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, three minutes, please.
Thank you very much. I would simply like to say that a lot of the. In this room, planning about this. The zoning code being crystal clear that developer would need one point seven five parking stalls. the zoning code being crystal clear that developer would need one point seven five parking stalls per unit off-street parking in order to build corner in our neighborhood. And what happened was the village staff brought to the plan commission without notice to anybody in the neighborhood that they were going to reduce that to one stall per, one stall per unit. So the zoning code is really what what Mr. Griebhrock says it is, which you back him up on. And we have been very royally drafted by the way this zoning code, which was supposed to be very clear, but clearly was not. How it was enforced. So I I don't think Mr. Byers assumption, looking at looking at the code saying it's crystal clear what it says here, because we couldn't, we couldn't rely on it. We don't think that you should take these conflicts and say, oh, well, it's obvious it's this. It's not obvious. It's very clear. The general provisions say every lot shall have thirty percent. That's what the code said. Thank you.
Understand, and I just need to take exception of that. And I know it's very unpopular. And I understand that the residents that are here in that neighborhood, I know that you really believe that and but I can't let you say that staff brought something without any notice to anyone. And I just take exception of that. I understand. I understand. So I just can't let it be. I understand.
I think one of the clarification points that I just want to address this and then I'd like to move on because it's nine nineteen is that there's not a staff member in this room who's just not trying to do the best that they can within their professional capabilities. As we move forward with the discussion, whether it be at this meeting or any other meeting, I would prefer that we keep to the subject matter at hand. Thank you.
Thanks. That's a good wrap up, a better way of saying it. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. If there is one tonight and it can be the motion as presented, it can be a different motion, it can be a motion to defer.
Dude, do I get a turn?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you took your turn at the beginning.
Nope. Just the new guy in the corner. You know, I've I've gone through going on seven years in the plan commission, seven weeks or whatever on the board. You know, I I've said this time and again since I started and it and I agree with with Arndorfer and Stokebrand and and Lynn and Baldoff and Arthur, if he agrees with us. But we've got to stop piecemealing this stuff like this. A project comes up and we tackle this issue, then the next meeting we tackle that issue, then the next meeting we tackle that issue and like, it's absurd. I mean, the 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 staff can't, I'm sure there's, there's a ton of confusion among the staff. There's obviously a ton of confusion among the residents. There's a ton of confusion among the plan commission members, I can tell you. And it sounds like this board, you know, we have an opportunity here. There's a process that's currently working. And that's the process that trustee Ursink and trustee Stokebrand are are part of, along with many, many community members, including representatives from the plan commission, whereby we're going through all the things that are happening in the commercial district and all the codes and the form base and what have you. And, you know, I don't for the life of me understand why we are taking another piece of code out to just address that little piece when someone else is working on this process. They're spending time, they're spending effort, we are spending money to figure this out. So why we're pardon my, why we're screwing around with this now? When someone else is taking it up, I I for the life of me don't understand. You know, I feel like for years now, we have bent over backwards for developers to do whatever we can do to get developments made, whether it's parking, whether it's zoning, code changes, whatever it happens to be. And we hear time again through emails, through person to person conversations to whatever, that folks want more green. Like, no one has ever talked to us about wanting less green space in this village. And and maybe you folks have had conversations and I haven't, but no one has ever come up to be asking for that. And while thirty percent might be too much, I don't see why we, it can't be a point of negotiation, a point of conversation, a point that frankly, that committee that is working right now couldn't take up themselves. Do I agree necessarily with the speculation and and then this just being a clarification? I don't. But that's just me and I'm, I've lost that vote and I'm fine with that. But, you know, to say that to say that we could defer this or to vote yes on this, frankly, I think is a slap in the face to the people that are working on this. And I'm going to be a no vote because I want to watch the process work itself out. I want to watch the citizens and the elected officials and everyone in that room be given the opportunity to make these decisions and come back with their referrals for us. And so, you know, I'm going to vote no. I'm voting no on principle because I'm frankly, I'm just sick of taking this stuff one piece at a time through many different commissions and boards now. But I'm also voting no because frankly, I'm I'm sick of these big ugly buildings. And so I want, you know, more aesthetically pleasing buildings in the village. I want the village to feel like the village. If we go with commercial versus residential, you know, Mr. Zovek, this is Krieger. Can't believe I remember. Is that close? Yes, didn't even write it down. The fifteen percent seems seems crazy to me. The thirty percent is is I think a great move to make it so that it's permeable, so that we're not just putting down pieces of plastic or other materials so that if somebody else's problem when it runs into their yard, makes a ton of sense to me. All of our yards are clay. The soil here is not that great. So yeah, so that's, that's where I'm at. I know I I went on a couple of different things here, but like, let's just let the the village of Shorewood and the people in the village of Shorewood figure this out for all of us. That's what we've asked them to do. That's what we're paying the consultants to do. And then when we're done, we come back, then we can take it up and have the the intelligent, comprehensive conversation that I know we're going to end up having sometime towards the end of this year or the beginning of next year. That's all I have on that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I know we had somebody online who had another comment. And if they still had something else to say, I would be in favor of letting, I think it was Kimberly, at her, at her point.
Before we do that, I just, the parking changes that we took up were not, the the timing was coincidental. Those parking changes were recommended as part of the comprehensive plan and that had to be adopted before those could be taken on. That's pretty well documented. Again, don't have to agree with that, don't have to feel the same. But it's really important to me that we because otherwise it's really indirectly sort of rejecting that staff has documented things very clearly for us. And I I just have to, that's been a pattern and we can't do that. So we've got to find a way to disagree without saying that someone did something wrong. Okay? It is okay that this came to us. A motion to defer can let the process play out. A vote on it tonight can also let the process play out. Now, we've established that a couple of times tonight, that it's not exclusive. So again, not, we can disagree, but I just want to be clear about what the options are so that we aren't getting confused. So.
I've worked with Bart for several years now on the plan commission. You know, it, if at any moment someone thinks that that I'm operating under the impression that staff is trying to monkey with stuff or screwing stuff behind the scenes, that is not my intention. I think that they are all professionals. They are doing the best that they can do. They are probably frankly understaffed. I don't necessarily, you know, agree with the coincidence argument, but I have no belief in this world that staff is driving the bus on coincidences or non coincidence or whatever it happens to be. So that that's.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, that's not the intention.
Okay, oh, trustee Lynn?
Could I just make one more clarification? I think if we vote no on this tonight, I just want to make sure that we we do in the subcommittee include, and I don't know if we have to make a note of it or or not tonight, that we include the nonimpervious language and that we do make it a point to move to clarify what it is for residential districts as as well. And include this language in the residential, you know, I don't want to accidentally forget about this later because I think especially the nonimpervious section is really important.
Bart, can you make a comment on that as to whether that would happen naturally?
If it doesn't happen naturally, I will force the conversation.
Fair enough. Okay. At the request of trustee trustee Baldoff, I will take one more comment from Ms. Kimberly Christine, who has her hand up. And then I would really like to move on to a motion or a deferral or whatever it's going to be this evening.
Hey, thanks for the time. I just wanted to say, you know, I really appreciate what, you know, everyone had to say about how the timing was coincidental and, you know, they're basically just that there was not any corrupt intent with taking up those issues with the code. But I want to say that it's important for public trust to even avoid the appearance of corruption. And I think that it's so important. Like the other lady said, I'm so sorry I didn't get your name. I'm trying to do this from Zoom and I'm getting a little bit mixed up about who said what. To just do it in a comprehensive way, like she said, that that invites public sentiment and has like an out in the open dialogue, because I think that the way that things have been going piecemeal, piecemeal, as you had said previously, it invites the appearance of corruption. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we've had a quite a bit of discussion. Is there a motion at this time? Trustee Ursink?
I'll move to defer.
I'll second. Any discussion?
We have a certification on what defer.
Yeah, thank you. Typically, when we use the, when we defer and under Robert's rules, we want to defer to a specific period in time. So from what I heard, at least this evening, it was that there may be some consensus that it's until upon conclusion of the commercial zoning district update.
Is that your intent?
Yeah, it's also what I heard.
Yeah. So we have a motion. That was my understanding. So we have motion and a second. Clarification, Bart, is there any? Does this impede any conducting of business if we don't vote on this this evening?
No, as I stated, my interpretation will remain the same. So until vote actually changes, my interpretation of the existing subsection will remain.
Is that clear to everybody on the board?
I'm a little unclear about the the deferral. Was there a time element?
Right to the conclusion of the zoning code update process.
So then.
Commercial zoning code district update.
Okay, but then, you know, the the whole point of the zoning code update is to come up with its own product. Why then would we want to come back to this old content and vote on it?
I interpret that to say the commercial zoning update will cover this specific item.
So we may not need to.
Okay.
Right. Was that a just a, okay. Yeah. Is your question if we defer it, why are, why would we defer it if it's going to be covered anyways?
Correct. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we don't just put it up for a vote and and see what happens.
Mr. Zovek? Can you please come to the microphone? Thank you. Your voice won't get picked up.
He's pretty loud. I think he doesn't.
I think regardless of what comes out of the commercial zoning project task force, this does need to come back because I feel strongly about nonimpervious services for residential. So I think it does need, at least the reasons I came forward today.
Trustee Kudo.
So is there anything precluding us from just taking the residential portion and voting on that this evening? And I.
Yeah, I think I asked that.
I mean, the one option you could do, and I I I understand, I don't believe the board likes doing this either, but you could simply adopt the clarification section and not the residentially zoned portion of the proposal. And that would clarify the nonimpervious and that would relate to you know, the thirty percent. So right, right now, the code says at least thirty percent of each lot shall be planted with grass shrubs.
Yeah, but you didn't, you added language.
Be called upon. Thank you.
I mean, would you like me to clarify or not? I I don't need to make motions for anyone, but to that point, if if you wanted to add the nonimpervious to the existing language, you could do that. It's just that that's really hard to make a motion with respect to you know, cutting sections one and cutting sections two and whatever. So I, it would not be my preferred way of doing it.
I mean, I, I totally understand you wanting to keep them together. My concern is the potential vagueness of the residential code portion right now as it stands. And I understand the concerns of the residents. You know, with mulch, I mean, right now it just reads thirty percent green, right? So if we don't do anything, it's thirty percent green. I'm okay with that. And we don't change it to mulch or or something else. And we can address that down the road because I think that still takes care of of the runoff situation. So I'm fine. Now, now I'm fine deferring it or just killing it right now.
There is a motion and a second for deferral, so.
I'm going to smile on your face, brother. Come on.
All right, any further discussion regarding the motion on the floor?
So just to be clear, if we defer this, the section about green space stays the same where it's got to be green. Right? We're not allowing the mulch or.
Right, everything stays the same.
Pavers or, okay, thank you.
So to clarify, so most, a yes is deferring it to the conclusion of the zoning code update in case there is more to discuss. And it comes back to, you know, we'll get an update at least. A vote no is to not defer. And then there would be a subsequent action on that. To be honest, my comment would be is that I feel like it's a little disingenuous to force a vote. It's such a politicized atmosphere right now. We've been threatened that if we vote yes, we're going, they're going to come after us, you know, so obviously voting no is preferable. You know, I, that I think, you know, I don't think we should do that to each other, but whatever. So I would take a vote at this time, and I don't think we have to do a roll call because it's not an ordinance, correct? Yeah. All right, all those in favor, in favor of deferring to the conclusion of the zoning code update, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes five two. Thank you, everyone. All right, moving on, we still have quite a bit of new business this evening. Nine B, consider ordinance. Oh, yeah, let's do a bio break. Yeah, bio break, sorry. Thank you. We will take a break until can we do five minutes or four minutes? Nine forty, return, please. Consider proposal for forty-four eighty Lake Drive alternatives for A. Not my screen, so he's working on pulling it up. Bill, do you have audio?
Yes, I should have audio. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Great to see you.
Yeah, okay. That was a lengthy discussion, so.
Thanks for hanging in there with us.
Yeah, no problem. So I can run through this fairly quickly, but it's an update. And then also, we're looking for a motion for an approval for, to move forward with alternatives to repair the retaining wall that's tilting at 4480 North Lake Drive. So just project background, I know it was about a month ago that we had the last update on this. So I'm not going to run through all these bullet points again. The new bullet point is we did receive the proposal from GZA for to evaluate repair options for the bluff slope and retaining wall to stabilize the bluff and the retaining wall are basically stabilize the bluff and potential options to fix the retaining wall. So we received that on May 13th.
Say who you are and who you represent.
Yes, Phil Bedusik with Strand Associates. So we're the contracted village engineer for Shorewood.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So jumping into the GZA proposal, the last meeting, we had talked about the lower retaining wall had appeared to be stable for, from fall through the winter and then during the spring thaw and first rains of the of the year, there was movement in the wall again. So the the portion of the bluff that we had hoped had kind of restabilized, started moving again. So we were initially looking at just doing testing to see if the wall in its current state was suitable to remain and stabilize the bluff. But with the additional movement that shifted from doing testing, just to check the basically the strength of the wall to moving into doing some additional testing and alternatives analysis for options to stabilize the bluff and potentially either replace the wall or use a different method to stabilize this portion of the bluff. So the GZA is the geotechnical firm. They did a peer review of the initial design. The initial design was completed by Miller engineers last year. So that was all information we went through last time. So the tasks in the GZA proposal are additional soil borings. These would be approximately 10 feet deep. Miller would actually be involved in this work in obtaining the soil borings. They have equipment to do the manual borings on the side of a bluff that GZA does not. GZA would be present while these borings are being obtained to do the incident to, yes.
Hi, sorry, I just want to, we're just seeing a screenshot of your screen. We don't actually see the presentation.
Oh.
I didn't know if you were trying to give us a synopsis or if you intended for us to see.
No, I intended for you to see.
Okay, I thought I didn't, I couldn't tell at the beginning, but I just wanted to let you know. We just, it's like a, we just see your desktop.
Okay, let me move the presentation to that screen.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
No problem. I, thank you. There we go. Now we see it.
Yeah, let's see if I can get it. Presentation mode wants to go to the other screen. I'm having trouble shifting it to that screen. So let me move this and we'll just work with it on this screen.
Actually will work. I think we can all see it clearly.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right, well, kind of start over. So here's the project background slide. So this was presented last May, just kind of walked through the history of the projects. Miller engineers doing the geotechnical investigation back in the spring of 2020. Then they completed the design. We had bids, wall was constructed, additional reinforcing isn't added last July. Contract is done by UPI Construction. And then we had movement of the wall. So we reached out for, for, we got four proposals for independent review of the project. GZA was the firm that was selected to do the independent review. They completed the review in February 2022. One of the recommendations in their letter was to do some additional sampling because at the time, at this time, the wall hadn't moved in approximately six months. So they're going to do sampling, additional analysis based on the results of that sampling to see if the slope had stabilized in the wall as it was or as it currently was at that time, was able to support the bluff. Then there was additional movement in April. So that shifted gears from reviewing if the wall in its current state was adequate to what are some alternatives to stabilize, further stabilize the bluff because it isn't stabilized in its current state. So after that meeting, we have to presented this in May, we requested a proposal from GZA for options to to propose a review options to stabilize the bluff and the retaining wall. So they provided a proposal on May 13th. Their tasks, one and two, and the proposal were additional soil borings to obtain more site-specific information. So they're proposing it's five 10-foot deep borings. Miller engineers would actually obtain the borings as I just stated previously, they have the equipment to do the the manual borings on this sort of terrain. It's not obviously very accessible to get to the bluff. You can't drive a drill rig up to it and, and obtain borings easily. So it's a manual effort. While Miller is obtaining the borings, GZA will be on site completing main shear testing and then other soil sampling. Also collect soil samples that'll be sent off to a lab for things like the Adaberg limits, triaxial testing, moisture content, those sorts of things. Two of the soil borings will be turned into monitoring wells to better understand groundwater movement in this area. And then this data will be utilized for developing the recommendations. So task three was laboratory testing, just compressive strength, Adaberg limits, triaxial testing and moisture content. So there, the guts of their proposal then would be the alternatives evaluation. So they're planning to develop four potential alternatives and planning level cost estimates for those alternatives. So one of them, it would be installation of a new lower retaining wall east of the existing lower retaining wall. The existing wall would be buried in place. Second alternative would be removal of existing wall, failed soils, replacement with riprap on a two-to-one slope. Third alternative would be removal of existing wall, failed soils, installation of reinforced vegetated retaining wall system. The wall likely be multi-tiered with internal drainage system. And then the fourth one is, and to be determined as they get into the analysis. Then with each of these, they would complete a slope stability analysis, make sure it's a viable solution. And then like sort of planning level cost estimate. And once these four are developed, the idea would be to select two preferred alternatives and then further develop these alternatives. So prepare a more detailed opinion of probable cost, verify with contractors that they have capacity to complete the work and get more, sort of more detailed cost estimate and additional correspondence with contractors just to further vet out the two preferred options. So estimated costs for the study is GZA is 21,700 and then Miller with the soil borings and some field sampling is 2,800. The schedule would be site visit and soil borings within two weeks and then preparing the summary report, which would be prepared to the stage of the four four potential solutions within four weeks. And then there'd be some additional time after that to narrow it down or refine the two selected alternatives. So the next steps, GZA evaluate alternatives, stabilize the lower retaining wall and bluff between the lower and upper retaining wall. And then, once an alternative is selected, complete design of the recommended alternative. So just want to be clear that design is not included in this current proposal. And then last would be construction of the recommended alternative. And we did receive, Miller did some additional survey of the wall late last week, and it, it hasn't moved a lot since April. There's been a couple of the points that moved, but it hasn't moved significantly in the period from late April to now. So that freeze thaw is what really seemed to trigger that additional movement. And now it's, there's been a little bit of movement, but not nearly as much as in that during that freeze thaw cycle. So with that, opening up for questions.
Thank you. So it's kind of like there are two tracks here in my mind. So one is sort of a technical about, you know, you have this this situation going on and these are the next steps to address that situation. The other is, in my mind, is also typically we, at what point do we need to understand our responsibility as a village board sort of to implement or execute, you know, sort of more contract work on this? That's not a question for the engineer because he's just presenting and engineering a set of technical facts and options. Does that make sense?
Yes, well, I can give you, oh, on the extreme ends, on the one hand, you're not committed to maintaining the integrity of this bluff indefinitely for all eternity. There's no doubt that you, you build on along the lake, along the bluff, and we've seen it all the way, you know, down you know, the entire shoreline, Wisconsin. Lake Michigan, you've read about it in the paper over the last five, six, seven years. There's been significant decay and erosion along those bluffs. Now, in this particular case, it's a unique situation because we did have a pipe that, that ran below this particular property several, it was over 100 feet deep. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, I think it was 120 to 130 feet. And, and there was found to be some damage to the pipe. And then it's the chicken and the egg question. Did erosion of the, of the bluff cause that damage or did the leakage out of the pipe and damage from the pipe cause further erosion and accelerate the erosion? You know, it's, it's hard to know. But there is no doubt that the village, when we came in to do the work to access our pipe and to fix that pipe, and we did, one of the things we looked at at the time was, could we just cut it off? Could we shut it off? Is there other options here? And really generally, the answer we found was, oh, we have, we've got to repair it. But we did. And then in order to do that work, we did have to further disturb the bluff and get access back there and dig and do some other things that otherwise disturbed that, that, that area there. So I, I think at this point, you know, we're, we're stabilizing the bluff or restabilizing bluff and creating a safe and stable bluff based upon the disturbance that we had undertaken to fix the pipe. And once we get past that sort of acute phase, you know, the, going to hand it back off to the, to the property owner and say, you know, now you're on your own, you know. It's not like we're going to retain responsibility to do this for the, there's our perpetuity. But you know, what we've seen, based working with our, our our engineers is that this is somewhat of an art as opposed to science when you're talking about different soils. Talking about the slip angles and the slope and all of those things that we've talked about in a number of meetings. And based upon the engineering analysis done, they did some initial work. We've seen some sliding. And, you know, at this point, the village has looked at this as necessary continuation to stabilize the bluff after the work that was done pipe below. And I guess I'll defer to our engineer to fill in engineering side of it. But yes, in the short term, we have some responsibility here to wrap up the work that we did in an appropriate manner, but we are not, to be clear, and we made that clear to the property owner. There is going to be in the future additional deterioration and that's going to be the responsibility of the.
Okay, so this scope of work you feel is a continuation of?
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to our engineer on the question. That was my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. It's a continuation. I mean, the, the retaining wall that was put in for the project. It, although it hasn't failed yet, it certainly could fail, you know, any, you know, if there's a large rain event, there's a really good chance that it would fail. And the bluff would potentially slide and jeopardize, you know, the upper retaining wall and the property owner's yard and potentially, you know, the storm sewer work that was installed. At this point, the storm sewer work that was complete. If there was a, if the retaining wall failed tonight, the storm sewer would be, it would, it, based on what we see out there, it wouldn't be in jeopardy. But over time, as the bluff started to slide more and the slide crept up the, up to the top of the bluff, it, it could jeopardize the storm sewer.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the trustees? And we are being asked to approve this. What's the action that we're being asked for? Or is this up an update? What's it agenda for?
I didn't see a motion.
Consideration.
Is there, I didn't see a motion.
Yeah, I didn't either. There wasn't a memo, I don't think. Phil, at this point, it's my understanding that you're requesting the board consider to move forward with the GZA proposal and Miller engineers. GZA in the amount of 21,700 and Miller engineers in the amount of 2,800 for the soil borings and field sampling.
Correct.
So you do need a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes. So just because we're all eager to see this wrapped up and I think because it's complicated and so many parties are involved, this is not necessarily a question for you, but I think it's something that we have to do going forward is I think we should be able to get an accounting of who's all getting how much money here. I think we've got three, three engineering firms and at least two, well, at least the one UPI. But it looks to me like we started out with, you know, like $980,000 and now we're up to almost $300,000 after that. I'm a little bit concerned that I still see Miller Engineering on here. So we hired them initially to fix this problem and they're still billing us and they're still involved in the project. And I've got to say, I don't, my confidence is a little bit faulty. And so I'm wondering, at what point do we keep paying an engineering company? Are they you know, they're still doing field testing and sampling and boring. They did this in 2020. They still don't have the information they need. We doubled down on their recommendation and their strategy and their science and they reinforced their wall last July. And I'm just wondering, I think we need going forward, our staff, I have to ask if we could please have an accounting of where the money's going on this project for the next time that we meet. And can you just explain to me the relationship with Miller Engineering right now? I, it just kind of galls me to see that they're still billing us. They want, now they want $2,800 to continue.
Yeah, so Miller's role in this particular part of the project now would be basically manual collection of the soil borings. So there aren't many entities out there that have the capabilities to collect the soil borings on the the steep bluff like this. Usually the sites are more accessible and you can drive a drill rig up and there's, you know, handful of firms that can do that. Where Miller has the equipment to do the work, shallow boring. Shallow borings, these are shallow manual borings on the side of the bluff. So they, they would essentially, Roger himself is out there dropping a hammer and collecting these borings while GZA will also be present. So it's really just he's, he's collecting data for the project. He's not involved in any of the recommendations that GZA will be putting together or would not be involved in the design of any of the recommendations that GZA would propose.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is, so since we've started going back and trying to figure out what's going on, are we moving heavy equipment down there at all? Or is it all pretty much just people walking down and doing? Are we disturbing it more? You know, are we, are we sending like bobcats and stuff down?
No, not at this point. Whenever, whatever the fix is that will likely involve heavy equipment. But at this point, it's foot traffic and and carrying things down there manually.
Did the, did the proprietor, the property owner, did he put in a concrete driveway?
The concrete driveway was put in as part of the project.
And so can we take heavy equipment on that concrete driveway?
It all have to be protected with plates or some other method to protect it from damage.
Thank you.
Trustees Stockbrand would be happy to provide a breakdown of costs the next time this comes to the board.
Thank you.
I know that there's a, you know, a specific scope of work before us tonight, but trustee Leonard, trustee Kudo, since this is your first exposure to an ongoing issue before the board, do you have any specific questions in order to take action this evening?
I think our first, I think our first meeting
Oh, there was an Okay.
The deuce.
All right. Well, then.
No, I actually, I just have a total curiosity question. I have no problem with this at all. This seems like a really specific engineering proposal coming before the board as opposed to like a policy?
It's a contract.
So just because it's a contract, it's for a little under $30,000 is why we dig this deeply into it? As opposed to going to like staff or DPW or where the contract would just be handled that way? And again, I have no problem with it. I'm just, this is curiosity.
In this particular circumstance, the board actually had to bond for the initial proceeds to actually move forward with this project. And it's a large sum. This is not, in my perspective, this is not routine business as normal. So we definitely do want to keep the board abreast of, of what we're inspiring. I mean, if you looked at the policy, you know, and we could say if it was less than 50% or something like that, I still wouldn't feel comfortable.
No, I mean, the dollar amount's large. I understand that. I just, it, this seemed more granular than policy, and so I was
I know.
Just wondering how.
Fair question.
And I just want to make sure we're doing okay.
Yeah, we're doing okay. All right.
I can, if the chair is ready, I can attempt a motion.
Absolutely.
I move that we approve a contract with GZA for tasks one, two, three, and four in amount not to exceed $21,700. And with Miller engineers, an amount for soil borings and field sampling not to exceed 2,000, exceed $2,800.
I'll second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving back to new business nine B, consider ordinance 3043 amending subsection 514-12 replacement and repair of service pipes. Is it my understanding that these next three items are coming out of, no, no, next two items are coming out of committee? Correct. Correct. Okay. Was that Public Works Committee, trustee Ursink? And it came out with a three zero recommendation?
I cannot, you'd have to refresh my mind on, on B, to be honest with you. Like I, we have Leanne on the line here.
We do. We have Leanne. We also have Director Emanuelson, who's gonna join us. One of his favorite things is to sit up here at the front. All right. So for those of us who are not in committee, we can't, you can sort of give us an overview and then the committee members are, feel free to share what your thoughts are. Director Bushlick, Director Emanuelson, which one of you would like to get us started?
I'd be happy to start. Both the the ordinance and the policy 44 were drafted with a lot of information that sets a context for this discussion. That was intentional. It went through a committee recently and came out unanimously, unanimously recommended. I believe a member was missing, but time is a bit of an essence with this revision to the ordinance as well as adoption of the policy. Again, kind of self-explanatory, if you've, if you've read through the materials, you know, it's gonna set the stage to be proactive on lead service line replacements. It's going to allow us higher rankings when considering grant opportunities. It's gonna set the stage for the Public Service Commission to approve the utility to reimburse up to 50% of the private side costs. We're gonna get rid of the lead laterals and and a few other things that I've outlined. So I, I guess really at this point in time, I'd be happy to take specific questions. Otherwise, we, we hope to have your continued support to move forward in this effort.
Great. So I will, if there's anything that the committee members want to add in support of the motion that we should know about, I would also entertain a motion or I would entertain questions. Trustee Ursink.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mark for this really well thought up program here. I, I think this creates an opportunity for us to be leaders in, in Milwaukee County or replacing our lead laterals or the North Shore, I should say. And I really appreciate all the work and thought you've put into this program here. So I, I know us as a board, we unanimously supported moving forward with this.
Great, thank you. Trustee Baldorf?
Yeah, I mean, I would just echo that. I think it's, it's incredibly important that we get this done. I appreciate that staff you know, acted with urgency to get this before us and make sure everyone had the information to move, move on it quickly so we can, we could start getting the work done and you know, capitalize on the federal dollars that are available to us. So thank you to staff and, you know, very happy to support this. I didn't, I didn't see a motion. Maybe I just missing it. Just flagging that. So I don't know what the motion would be. Just to approve.
Ordinance 3043 and state the title of it and the same thing with policy 44.
Great.
Separate motions.
Yeah, I, I disagree. I mean, I think this is really creative solution for homeowners too, to provide relief using those federal dollars. You know, this is, it's been a problem for a long time. I, I think lead pipes were banned federally in 1986. So glad we're getting around to it now. It's you know, I think, you know, this is, this is the best we can do, given the situation. These, the pipes have to go. There's no alternative to that. So this frees up the opportunity to not only reduce the cost dramatically for the homeowner, but then also give them the opportunity to spread out that cost at an interest-free loan. I mean, that, that's, that's about as good as we could do. So all in favor of this and very appreciative of the creative solution.
Trustee Ursink.
I'd just like to move forward with the motion.
Let's go.
So I move to approve, so I move to approve ordinance number sorry, I've got to do this on my phone. I, I see it. I got you. Yeah, no, I see it. I've moved to approve ordinance number 3043 amending subsection 51412 replacement and repair of service pipes.
Second.
All right, trust, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any discussion? I also want to say thank you to the staff and to the committee. All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldorf.
Yes.
President McCaig.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Great, thank you. Moving to nine C, consider policy 44, lead service line replacement program. So this is the companion policy that needs to be approved separately, but it is in alignment with the ordinance already discussed. Trustee Ursink?
I'd like to make a motion.
Great.
Like to make a motion to approve policy number 44, lead service replacement program.
Second.
Trustee, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Nine D, consider ordinance 3044, an ordinance prohibiting parking between 4074 and 4090 North Lake Drive. This is coming before us out of, which committee is it? Or was it the tag?
Public Works.
Public Works. The memo provides a lot of background on this. We didn't come to this recommendation quickly. And, but it did come out of committee with a unanimous vote. So at this time, I would take a motion unless there are any questions. Trustee Stokebrand?
I'd have to change the wording slightly, so I'm, I'll go slowly. I move to prohibit parking between the driveways serving 4082 North Lake Drive and installation of no parking between driveways signage at 4074, 4082, and 4090 North Lake Drive.
Is there?
Second.
Okay. Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any discussion? All right, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldorf. Yes, President McCaig.
Aye.
Motion carries seven, oh, pardon me. I know I have to mix up the order. Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Can I? Can I just be a, a that guy real quick? There is a typo on this of President McCaig's name. So just flagging that.
Thank you. Where is it?
In, in the McCaig, on the actual ordinance.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
I don't know if that like impacts anything legally, but I
It does not, but thank you. We will correct that. Thank you.
If it wasn't that, I wouldn't just be like, oh, there was like a word in the thing.
Nine E, consider resolution 2022-0-06-2021 compliance, oh, 2021 compliance maintenance annual report. This is an annual report and an annual action that we are asked to take. Director Bushlick, is there, this is pretty clear cut?
It, it is. Excuse me?
You are muted.
Sorry. If, if I may be permitted just to make a follow-up comment from the previous item, just a question for attorney bear. Does the motion need to reference the approved ordinance?
I thought about that when no, I don't, I think it's okay. Is that clearly it's noted? Motion. Implementing.
I don't think she can hear you.
Yeah, I think it's fine. It's okay, because the motion actually referenced everything that was implemented by the, by the order.
Thank you.
All right. So is there anything related to this agenda item that you would like the board to consider?
No, as you mentioned, this is housekeeping. This is an annual action that is required of the board relates to its permit to discharge sewage. And it, it
Which we don't like to do.
Well, I mean, we, we collect it and deliver it, might be a better way to state it. There are no deficiencies that are, that are noted or require, that require any action. But code does require the board to adopt a resolution stating its understanding of the report and the grade received.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion at this time or questions?
I was close to moving, but I lost it on my phone here. So somebody else is gonna have to
Trustee Stokebrand?
Move this one along.
I just would like to thank Leanne for all of her work on this. I know she calls it housekeeping, but it looks like a lot of work. I move to approve resolution 202206, a resolution regarding the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources NR 208 2020 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report.
Second.
Right. Trustee, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call, right? Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldorf.
Yes.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand.
Aye.
President McCaig.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Nine F, consider resolution 2022-07, moving the central count processing from the Shorewood High School North Gymnasium 1701 East Capitol back to the Village Hall, 39 North Murray Avenue. This is, did this, let's see, is this coming from committee? It's coming from Clerk Carol.
It's coming from me.
Ah, hello. Good evening. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
So the, the memo lays out the history of this item, including item step six, April 25th, kind of going back over the consideration and feeling that the moving the central count is feasible and preferred. Yes?
Yes, yes.
Is there anything else you would like the village board to know in consider, in before considering this item?
Um, I met with the co-chiefs about it and they looked at the Village Hall Committee Room and the courtroom and found that it was adequate spacing for central count. And given the fact that I don't have a deputy clerk to assist me with running the ballots and making sure that they're done securely, it, it makes more sense to just have it upstairs.
Great. I would entertain a motion or a question?
I was gonna say, I would make a motion, but also I want to say I, I support whatever Clerk Carol and the staff need to do to, to run our elections safely and fairly, which I know they do. And having seen the team in action in the recent election, we're very lucky here in Shorewood to have such wonderful staff running our election. So whatever you guys recommend, I'm happy to support. But if trustee Arndorfer had a question, I can hold off.
I was gonna make a motion.
You, then go ahead.
I'll defer. I already moved on.
Okay. Wait, well, I guess I will make a motion then. I move to adopt resolution 202207, moving central count processing for wards one through 12 to the Village Hall Committee and Courtrooms for the August 9th, 2022 election and onward.
Second.
All right. Motion by trustee Baldorf, Baldorf, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any discussion?
Real quick question. Who needs to know that this moved? So that, I mean, if there are folks that are, that are tracking vote totals or whatever, how, how will folks know that the count's been moved?
Right. So once, or if the resolution is approved, then I will send a copy to Milwaukee County so that they're aware of it. And then I can also send verbiage to the residents, letting them know as well. And I think they'd be happy that it's at Village Hall.
Great. Cool. Thank you very much.
Good question. Any other questions?
Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Stokebrand?
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, moving along, nine G, thank you very much Clerk Carol. Nine G, consider traffic and parking regulation program request, North Wilson and East Olive pedestrian crossing signage. Trustee Ursink?
Yep, so this is another one that came out of Public Works Committee. We heard several residents talk about how dangerous this intersection is, and so this is an intersection right by my house, and I take it daily to go into the park, whether it be the farmer's market, Estherbrook Park for dog walks. And we've had several complaints with, you know, mothers with little kids, that sort of thing. There's right now a pedestrian stop, so there's a sign that says pedestrians and bikes must stop. Nobody stops, ever. You know, like you could be literally like, your hands in the air and nobody's stopping for you. It's very rare that people stop. So I think we, we are looking at options to, to further just let traffic know that this is an intersection where they must, they must yield. So the idea of a solar-powered flashing beacon came up. They've been effective in other parts of the community, and we figured we would give that a shot at this intersection to promote a little bit more safety.
And so that was, it was a unanimous recommendation?
Unanimous recommendation from Public Works.
Would you like to make?
I'd love to make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I'd like to move to approve the purchase and installation of a solar-powered rapid flashing beacons at the marked crossing at the intersection of North Wilson Drive and East Olive Street at an estimated cost of five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Second.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Lynn. I will be supporting this. We were, we did roll call meetings at the Police Department and the day shift. Thought it was a great idea. Additional feedback. Trustee Stokebrand?
I just have two questions. If, Leann, if you're there, is this, will these be the first solar-powered rapid flashing beacons that we have in the village?
Um, they would not, no.
Okay, and so?
We've utilized solar installations in other areas.
On rapid flashing beacons?
Correct.
Okay, and so then, will you need, like install, installing this, is it gonna go into like a little concrete pad? Dirt?
We're currently working out the logistics of the installation. There's, there's not unlimited space, and what we're trying to do is determine what is going to be the best placement of these to keep them close enough to the intersection, but also provide a, a scenario where these signs don't further block sites. Because they're pedestrian-activated, they have to be accessible and within arms' reach of the person who is attempting to cross the intersection. That does provide some challenges because of the way this cross, particular crossing was designed. But I'm, I'm confident it's something that we can work out. But they will be on posts. As, as I mentioned, we're, we're still working on the exact location as it relates to, you know, the, the edge of the crosswalk.
My other question was, I believe these are not in the budget, and so I'm just, I know we had parking and transportation study implementation in, and I'm wondering if that could be a source of funding for this?
Staff is proposing to use the remaining allocation of funding for the traffic and parking analysis implementation. I would, I would like to take this opportunity to note that that estimate was prepared for the Public Works Committee. After Public Works discussion, we did request a formal estimate from the supplier, but have not yet received that. I think, depending on how you wish to proceed, you know, the fifty-seven hundred dollar figure is an estimate. It could very likely be a couple thousand dollars more than that. I don't expect it to be more than ten, but it, as I mentioned, at this point, that's an estimate that staff put together based on the information that was available to us. It is not a formal quote from the, from a vendor.
Okay, but you already have plans for the, the budget money for twenty twenty-two for the parking and transportation implementation?
This, this would, would be easily accommodated by those available funds.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to say not to exceed ten thousand dollars? Would that be more helpful, or is the language, the current language appropriate?
I, i, in the past, my understanding was they were like about seven thousand. The, the ones we did on Metro Market, I think, came to about seven thousand, all in all.
I'm comfortable with like a friendly amendment to say not to exceed ten thousand, and if we wanna maybe add any language about, you know, using the funds that it's coming from, to make that clarity, but I would, I don't, like, I don't wanna make this come back before us.
Yeah.
Just because we don't know the exact amount, because I think we all agree that, you know, the price tag for safety is, we're comfortable with.
Is that all right, Leann? Are you?
Yeah, if, if you're comfortable with that, that absolutely works for us.
And that, those funds are there from the parking and transportation analysis comfortably?
That is my understanding, but Mark can certainly confirm.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, friendly amendment? Cool.
So noted. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we are, is this a roll call? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Nine H, consider proposal to restructure senior resource center staffing and Benjamin Fund spending policy. Let's see, is Elizabeth Price still on the call?
I am.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this comes before us, and for those, we do need to, to approve this, but the Benjamin Fund is not something that we control or provide, provide oversight on. Is the, I'm guessing that the Elder Services Advisory Board is in support of this policy change, Elizabeth?
Yes, and we are here today because we've had some ongoing staffing challenges that have been exacerbated over the last couple of years. So on the screen, I have a timeline that shows that the Elder Services Advisory Board has approved the proposal to restructure the SRC staffing, which includes an amendment to the Benjamin Fund spending policy. We brought this on May sixteenth to the JPNL Committee, and they moved it forward to your consideration, full board consideration, where we are today. And then should you agree to approve this, the amended spending policy, which will now be the Benjamin Fund Spending Policy twenty twenty-two, will be activated upon the Shorewood Foundation President's signature. So that's the process.
Thank you.
And then I just want to outline what we're asking. So the proposal has three asks. We are changing the program assistant to a program coordinator. We're moving the programming into this position, which has been more of an assistant, so it's more responsibilities. We're increasing from nineteen to thirty-two hours, and we're asking for an increased wage range from two eighteen to twenty-two dollars per hour. We're thinking of starting at the eighteen dollar per hour. We are taking this opportunity to request a title change for my position, which we feel more accurately reflects the duties of the position. So we're asking that to become Director of Senior Services. There's no additional funding requested for that title change. And then with this, the Benjamin Fund Spending Policy is amended, and I will show you the language on the next slide. But in essence, the, the fund will cover the additional thirteen hours in wage, wage costs, and fringe, fringe benefits.
Thank you very much. Oh, so, okay.
I'm sorry, did?
No, you can.
Do you have a question?
No, you can.
Okay, thank you. So I, I wanted to point out that the funding, over the last five years, we've had an average surplus interest income of thirty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And at eighteen dollars an hour, thirty-two hours, taking a family plan, the, the cost would be thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And so we, we would accomplish the full funding through the Benjamin Fund interest income, increasing our programming fees, which are down eighty-two percent since before the pandemic. And then we have some room in our program department supplies. We've been providing goodie bags in lieu of in-person programming, and we'll be eliminating these as we move forward with more in-person programming. So we expect to have some more funds available. We also have other options within the budget to cup, to cover some of the funds. So I wanted to assure the board that we anticipate covering the full cost of the fringe benefits and wage through the Benjamin Fund, and then through either increasing fees, a combination of increased fees and decreasing some of our expenditures in other areas. Here is a slide which is a lot to read, but I wanted to show the existing language and the amended language. And I'd like to thank Attorney Bear for his help in crafting the language so that we could be sure that the village was protected in their fiscal responsibilities, and they will maintain their current responsibility for the one point three five positions. And the Benjamin Fund will pick up the remainder.
And you can.
And then the.
Attorney Bear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the final slide is just to show again what the motion is that we are seeking this evening. And I'd be willing to entertain your questions.
Are there any questions? So this has no fiscal impact on the village tax levy, correct?
Correct. Correct.
All right, I'll read it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion from trustee Kudo.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Staff hours, I think you need the word weekly in there.
Not exempt, but weekly staff hours?
Hours weekly.
Hours, okay.
Unless it's.
Nope. Last word is weekly, that's what you want?
It's, the, the one in here, I'm not sure.
I'm gonna read it, and then go ahead and make a friendly amendment. All right, here we go. I motion to increase staff support at the Shorewood Senior Resource Center with the addition of thirteen general-class non-exempt staff hours. The program assistant position will become a program coordinator in hourly wage range of eighteen to twenty-two dollars. The title of the Senior Resource Center coordinator will become Director of Senior Services. Wage and benefit costs associated with the addition of thirteen general-class non-exempt staff hours at hourly wage range of eighteen to twenty-two dollars in the Senior Resource Center are to be fully funded by the Benjamin Fund. And with this motion, direct the Shorewood Foundation Executive Board with the Elder Services Advisory Board to amend the twenty thirteen Benjamin Fund Spending Policy to allow Benjamin Funds to be used to fully reimburse the village of Shorewood for additional wage and benefit costs occurred within, with the addition of these thirteen non-exempt staff hours.
Per week.
Per week.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any further discussion?
Congratulations.
Well, we haven't taken action yet, but.
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon. Thank you for finding this creative solution, because I know that it's come up before, before the Village Board during budget discussions, and it has not been successful, and it's been frustrating for you. So I hope that this opens up a lot of new, I hope it passes, and I hope that it opens up new opportunities for staffing continuity within the organization.
Thank you.
All right, is this a roll call vote? Nope, okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Elizabeth, have a good.
Thank you so much, and I'm very much looking forward to this change. Thank you.
Congratulations, Director.
Right, okay. So moving on, items nine, I, J, and K all reside within the Department of Financial Services, or Finance. We're doing a great job. So we'll take nine I, preview of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three budget challenges and revenue opportunities. This is a presentation only. If we can give direction, Mark would like sort of a reflection of interest so that he can prepare information. Given the late hour, if we are not able to do that in a, you know, cohesive, efficient, thoughtful manner, we can always come back to this. I'll hand it over to Director Manuelson.
Uh, sure, thank you. You know, as we start out the budget year, we, we start feeding different pieces of information to those board to kind of build, you know, a head of steam going into the budget cycle here in, in September. This is the budget challenges preview memo. It's a pretty standard memo, but it, it reviews that, you know, the village has got some, some very specific financial constraints within its, its budget. So I'm, I'm not gonna read the, the entire memo, but there are a lot of ongoing structural challenges. Again, we don't have a lot of vacant land to build subdivisions on and things of that nature to expand the tax base. So as costs go up, the way funding works is that vast majority of those costs have to be absorbed under the property taxes as a village's primary source of revenue. On the second page of the memo is kind of our nuts and bolts. Usually this is a warning that we're gonna have trouble with expenditure restraint due to the structural increases the village faces in, in its budget, and then the limits of expenditure restraint in a two percent inflationary environment. Such is not the case this year. We certainly continue to outline the biggest structural changes that we see coming for the, when we start building the twenty twenty-three budget. But with the current CPI indexes and the way the state's gonna calculate the village's expenditure restraint limits, we're going to have about nine hundred thousand dollars of room for expenditure restraint to remain eligible for that funding. And, and these changes reflect about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of what we call those baseline changes. So we don't expect expenditure restraint to be a, a challenge for the village this year. Also part of this process is to make note to the, to the board that there's always opportunities for cutting some expenditures every year in the budget. We've highlighted a few items that we've put together over the last several years. Some have previously been adopted, not any of these on the list. These are still the ones that have not been adopted. Just for, for context, for you to review and contemplate if, if there's a desire to cut expenditures, you know, just some of the things that could be done and, and their fiscal impact. And then on the next page, we, we talk about revenue diversification. You know, there's a lot of talk about, you know, the tax levy and the tax rates in the village, and, and they're higher than many of our surrounding communities for a number of reasons. Though one of the things that the, the village could choose to do is diversify its, its revenue from the tax levy to other sources. The challenge with that is if you have the same people. The challenge with that is if you have the same people paying the same fees under a different methodology, it really doesn't change the total metric. But there are some benefits to each one of the three items that we do have listed. Should the Village Board want to explore further those items, we'd like to bring additional materials to you before the budget process, that we can integrate whatever the board's decision may be on those with our preparation for the 2023 budget. That is my feed dial on the budget outlooks. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them now or at any point in time in the future.
Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, not so much a question, but, you know, I know it's gonna be unpopular, but I would be very much in favor of evaluating installation of parking meters in the business district. So whatever we can do to like, whatever I can do to get more information on that, I would love to have more information on that particular item.
Trustee Stokbrand.
I would second that. I would be interested in that also.
Has what I, okay, seems like?
I'm a no.
That's okay, we're not voting.
I already lost.
No, we're only requesting information at this point, it's not a vote. So for, you're ahead of the moment, okay, but you'll have your chance.
Mr. Popper over there.
So, seems like there's a request for information and possible consideration of that policy item this year. Other interest in more information from Director Emanuelson in anticipation of our budget discussions.
I would just like to point, and I'm sure we all know, we're already paying a wheel tax to Milwaukee County, so personally, that's a non-starter for me. I would be more willing to consider the parking meters and the refuse collections than another wheel tax, because I'm already paying on my hybrid also. Pay $75 more to have a?
All right, any other? If there's no, are there any other comments or information for Director Emanuelson? If not, that's okay, because we have time, and I would appreciate for following up in email if there's no further discussion tonight. Trustee Ursink?
I would just say there's a couple bid-related things in here, and maybe to bring the bid, the new big bid director in, just to kind of discuss those and see where the bid's at with that conversation. I know they don't need to be a part of the conversation now, but I think they are anticipating some expenses in the future, so it'd be a good, you know, we should create that conversation at some point with them. To let them know that we're looking into these things.
Noted.
And then the subsequent memo for capital budgeting baseline is, again, it's an introduction, it's a supporting document that we share with trustees. It's tied into the Long Range Plan, which will be next week. Look forward to seeing everybody there. And again, it just outlines why there's a need for ongoing, a certain amount of stability in that funding for maintaining a certain subset of the village's assets that we don't borrow funds for. You know, our fleet, our IT systems, our building, maintenance and repairs, things of that nature. Again, it's informational. Please take your time to refer to that when you have a moment, and that's really all that is meant to provide for the board.
Yes, Trustee, hold up.
I have one question. Is it possible, and like, not an urgent thing, but, you know, just kind of as we move forward into next year's budget process, to get updates, you know, periodically on what what federal dollars are going to be available or that we're applying for as a result of the infrastructure bill? So I know that some of the guidance isn't out yet, and there might be some dollars that we don't know if we qualify for, but it would just be helpful to, you know, have a sense of, you know, are there any competitive grants we're gonna be going for? And if that's?
It's my understanding that any grant applications need board approval, so you would definitely see those.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the final item on our agenda this evening is Consider Financial Advisor Services. The information is in our packet, and I just want to in advance thank Trustee Stokbrand and Director Emanuelson and Village Manager Ewald for all the time that it took to review these proposals and have interviews. I really appreciate all the information that is being brought forward. And so, how would you like to take this? Trustee Stokbrand?
I could make a motion and?
Wonderful.
And we could have, I move to approve Baker Tilly for Financial Advisory Services and request staff to bring forth the service agreement at a future meeting.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Stokbrand, seconded by Trustee Kudo. Any discussion? If not, all of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, that brings us to the end of New Business. We have reports of village officials. The only report I have is to encourage you to attend the Judge Mosley Training on Unconscious Bias, which I believe is June 15th, hosted by Bay Bridge, and it's a great partnership to support. Village trustees?
Yes. I have two. One, just want to say congratulations and happy graduation to all the seniors. I know that you have ones, so.
Thank you very much.
I know that's bittersweet. Also, I guess I have three. So the second is congrats to our kids running track in Shorewood, had a great performance at states this weekend, and then also Happy Pride Month, everybody.
All right, thank you very much. So, any other reports?
As President McKay alluded to earlier, Friday, the village manager and myself had a shift-change meeting. Police Department, probably one of the top 25 things I've done at 6:00 AM, but it was a really good time. Spent some time with the officers, learned more about some of the issues they're facing. As alluded to earlier, you know, we did have a our point of view recently in St. Pine at Wilson, so a little less like the opening of Hill Street Blues, as I was hoping I was getting into, but it was a great experience, looking forward to doing again, and heading there on Wednesday for the afternoon shift. I highly encourage it to everyone here.
Yeah, also, standing invitation for ride-alongs from the officers, brought that up again. You can.
I would strongly encourage a ride-along, or even better, get a walk-along.
Could do both, or bike along, actually. Excellent. Any other reports? Reports of village manager?
Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief, but you can expect by the end of the week to have an outline or a compilation of the initiatives that were submitted from not only the staff, but then also from the trustees. There are some overlap on particular areas, so I'm gonna break it down for you, and then also provide kind of a synopsis about how we're gonna continue moving forward with exploring some. One, for example, which would be street lighting, which is gonna be coming back for discussion at our special meeting next week on Monday for the Long Range Plan. So our engineer has a proposal that they're gonna be presenting and talking to with this group. Then moving on to the 20th, we're gonna be asking for some additional input, and then finally rounding out on July 5th, because the 4th is a Monday. Our meeting moves to Tuesday, and then we're gonna generate some consensus among the board in terms of how we proceed. So I'm gonna be outlining, that was a lot, and I know it's late, but that's gonna be outlined for you within a report, so you'll see what items have been submitted, and then we'll move forward with processing through those items. Also, on the 20th, we'll we anticipate the report from FGMA and the Public Works Facility. I know that was something of, an item that people wanted more information about. So we'll be getting information, education, and then boiling that down to prioritizing some decisions hopefully by July 6th.
Thank you. Yes.
So is that report, the whole facilities or just the DPW one? You mentioned it?
FGMA is doing a facility condition assessment and Public Works, and then also Village Hall, so it'll be presentation of both.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 11, future items of consideration, are there any? Great. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Ursink, seconded by Trustee Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 10:53.